You may begin, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir. I call this meeting to order the Fallcroft Borough Council on May the 25th, 2021 at the top of the seventh hour, 7:00 PM prompt. I'd like to turn it over to the mayor for the flag salute and invocation.
Okay, you all know the tutorial. We've been doing it for over a year. It's getting better, but there's still people dying. Take a moment to think about them. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Joe, you're on mute.
What's that, Mayor?
You were on mute.
I was. Yeah, I didn't. I don't like to talk over you when you're doing the, the, the pledge. All that background noise, it kind of, I think it confuses people. So before we begin, I just want to make sure to mention that we did have an executive session prior to this meeting. And we will ratify the decisions that were determined in the course of that executive session this evening. With that said, let me move on to passing this off to the borough manager for the official roll call.
Council President Papaleo.
Present.
Councilman Kyle Willis.
Present.
Councilwoman Lee Daly.
Present.
Councilman Nick Waters.
Here.
Councilwoman Melinda Isaac. Councilwoman Melinda Isaac.
Present.
Councilman Jason McGuigan. Councilman Jason McGuigan. Hold on, let me just double check. Not seeing him on here. Somebody just joined. Should we give them a moment? All right, Councilman McGuigan is absent. Councilman Robert Ruskowski. Councilman Robert Ruskowski. Councilman Ruskowski is absent. Mayor Bob Frye.
Here.
Solicitor Alex Baumler.
Here.
And I am present.
All right. Anything from audience participation, Andrew?
There was no audience participation.
Are there any audience members on the call? No. I thought I saw some names that looked new, but just figured I would ask. Moving on to consideration of the application for grant of conditional use by Vision Charter Academy. Could somebody explain more about this?
So, well, I'll take the lead here, Joe. So first things first, we're going to do our public hearing. Andrew is the court reporter on.
Yes, that's Bridget. She's here. Hi, Bridget. Nice to meet you in person.
Hi, Bridget. All right, step one excellent.
All right, will this be the only thing that's on the record? The hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, so Joe, first things first, this is a conditional use hearing. I'll kind of explain the details of what that means and how we're going to proceed in a minute or two. But formally, you're going to need a motion by one of the members of your council to open this hearing. On the record, I'll give you the language. So if any council member wants to step up and repeat what I'm about to say, this is what you will say. And here it goes. I'd like to make a motion to open Fullcroft Borough Council Public Hearing 2021-01 for Vision Academy Charter School of Excellence for conditional use of the property located at 1800 Delmar Drive.
Alex, I hate to be a pain here, but would you mind repeating that very slowly?
Sure. Sure, sure, sure. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to open Fullcroft Borough Council Public Hearing 2021-01 for Vision Academy Charter School of Excellence for conditional use of the property located at 1800 Delmar Drive. So again, I can't make that motion to open it. So if one of the members of the council.
I'd like to, I'd like to request a motion from the body of council. Can I do it this way?
Yeah.
I'd like to request a motion from the body of council to open Fallcroft Borough Council, Fallcroft Borough. What's the word I'm looking for? Yeah. Alex.
Did full public hearing 2021-01. And then we'll get, we can just fill in the rest on the record. We have the motion language out there now.
All right, for Vision Academy Charter School of Excellence for the property located at 1801 Delmar Drive, correct?
Correct.
Do we have a motion to open the, the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All right. So the meeting within the meeting is now meeting.
Correct.
So what, what happens next?
I'll take over for a while, Joe. All right. So, um, so basically this is a public hearing. This is a hearing within a hearing as Council President Papaleo alluded to. We have an application set forth by Vision Charter Academy and it's for conditional use of that property located 1800 Delmar Drive. What that means is in your zoning code, in the, let me just pull up the RS Retail Service District as it is known under zoning ordinances, there are certain uses that are automatically written into the zoning ordinance that are permitted by rights. And what that means essentially is that the council or your zoning hearing board do not have to give permission to allow the applicant to go ahead and use those uses. So within the RS district, there are certain set uses by right. Those include retail stores, general merchandise, food stores, personal service shops, eating or drinking establishments, banking, professional offices, theaters, apartments, parks and plazas and mixed use. The applicant before you, Vision Charter Academy School is of course proposing a charter educational institution be placed in the district and that is not a use permitted by right. So therefore, under the zoning ordinance, under 600-41, this falls under a use permitted by conditional use. So there are specified conditional uses in the RS district and I'll read those to you. A video game arcade, a health club or spa, a public parking garage, or any use permitted in 600-40 that has a floor area exceeding 7,500 square feet. And then lastly, in section E, there is also a kind of catchall, which is what I believe we'll be falling into tonight for any use of the same general character as those permitted in 600-40 or 600-41. So, long story short, the applicant is before you tonight in order to present evidence and testimony as to why their proposed use would fit into one of the conditional use categories. Conditional use would be granted by you as the borough council and thus, we're having a public hearing on the record to receive that evidence and testimony and for your council to make a final decision. That final decision, by the way, will not be rendered this evening. This is a formal public hearing where you guys are sitting as basically a judge in a court of law and receive the evidence and testimony. And then, once the hearing is formally closed, the transcript will be issued by our court reporter. You'll have the opportunity to review that transcript and the evidence that is presented to you. And then, under the rules of the MPC, you will have to issue a written opinion whether approving or denying that use within 45 days from the date of this hearing. Of course, we, as your solicitor, will draft that opinion on your behalf. So that is the background and that is why we're here. I usually like to run my conditional use hearings as quickly as possible, quite frankly. So I've got a couple of housekeeping items that I always like to get out of the way at the beginning. And the first is that the borough is going to introduce several exhibits into the record. Now, of course, because we're doing this digitally, the borough manager will have these physical documents. He will mark them as exhibit numbers in his office and then we'll put the record together, of course, once we receive the physical transcript. But for the record and, you know, so that we have everybody on the same page, I'd like to go ahead and mark our exhibits. So exhibit, and we're going to start calling them F for, excuse me, for Fullcroft. F1 is, we will call that Exhibit 1 in this, guys, but it will be known as F1. That will be a copy of the advertisement of the hearing in the newspaper of general circulation and the proof of publication. And Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, but that was run two times, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. Exhibit F2, we will mark as a copy of the letter and application of the applicant drafted by Mr. Leinhouser. And please let me know if I butchered your name.
It's Leinhouser.
Leinhouser, thank you.
No worries, no worries at all.
And that application and letter are dated February 5th, 2021. Exhibit F3 will be known as the copy of the letter of Mr. Leinhouser dated April 26th, 2021. This is a letter which formally requested withdraw of the applicant's request for a special exception from the zoning hearing board without prejudice and requested a conditional use hearing before the borough council. Exhibit F4 will be a copy of the May 20th, 2021 meeting minutes of the Fullcroft Borough Council, I'm sorry, the Fullcroft Borough Planning Commission. Andrew will have those, I'm sure, shortly. We don't have those on hand yet. And that will wrap it up for the borough's exhibits. Of course, we will have applicants, evidence and exhibits as we go throughout the hearing and we'll mark those as A1, A2, A3, etc. And then my last kind of housekeeping note here is that this, of course, is a public hearing. I don't know how many members of the public are out there, but if they're watching and they would like to, of course, jump onto the call at any point, they're more than welcome to. There are two things that go on here. The public is invited to make public comment themselves as to any part of the application at the end of each witness that is presented by the applicants. Now, the public may also seek what is known as party status to this hearing. Party status essentially means that you are given the full right and privilege to examine the witnesses and to present your own evidence if you so choose during this hearing. And of course, if there were an appeal of this decision to the court of common, please, you would have the right to participate as a full party to that proceeding as well. In order to achieve party status, one, you have to make the request to do so. And second, you have to be what is known as within the zone of interest as developed by the statutes and the Pennsylvania case law. Most commonly and easily defined, the zone of interest is if you are a property owner that is located within 500 feet of the subject property. Now, you could also be an organization as well that has members located within that zone and/or that has a specific interest tied to the conditional use that's being presented. That being said, you can request party status at any point during this hearing, but I always like to at least get ourselves set up at the beginning to see if anybody is requesting this status so that we can take that inquiry away and have a more smooth hearing. So I will pause and I will ask if there's anybody out there as a member of the public that is seeking party status to this hearing this evening. Okay, hearing none. I will just assume, again, if you're a member of the public, you can request party status as we go on. There will be a point of no return once the evidence is completed and the parties have rested, but that will still be an opportunity for public comment at the end of the hearing as well. With that being said, that is all the background. The other only note that I would have is that, of course, we have a court reporter taking down and transcribing everything that is said tonight. So please, you know, let's have one person speak at a time to make her job much easier. If, you know, a person is speaking, let them finish their complete thought or the complete sentence and give it maybe a, you know, a pregnant pause of a second or two before speaking so that we can have a clear record and that we don't have to keep going back and correcting it and, you know, overburdening our court reporter this evening. So, all those things being said, that's my background, that's my introduction, and I will turn the floor over to the applicant, Mr. Leinhouser.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Brian Leinhouser. I'm an attorney and I represent Vision Academy. Our conditional use request for you this evening is directed toward the 1800 Delmar Drive address. Our proposal is to put upon approval from the Pennsylvania Charter School Appeals Board to have a charter school operate out of the facility that was previously used as a furniture warehouse or furniture store. It is a conditional use and so we went before the planning commission last week, in fact, at which point they had no objection to our use of the facility and voted to permit the use or to recommend the use. It's your choice whether to permit it or not as a result of the evidence you receive at the hearing this evening. The proposed use of the facility would be a kindergarten through eighth grade charter school, which is a public school. It would be operating in the facility and I will have some initial drawings of what we propose the use to look like in the facility. Charter schools are public schools and the, so it would be a public school under the oversight of an independent board of trustees and under the oversight of the Southeast Delco School District if the application is approved. The operation of the school would be during, or during ordinary school hours. And so it would not be a lot of late evenings or anything of that nature to disturb the community. There are concerns and considerations in this, in the ordinance, in the borough's ordinance with regard to what the use is as compared to the use of the remainder of the facility right now. The upper portion of that shopping center, it has retail establishments in it. The section of the facility that we propose to use is the lower portion of the facility and I'll have some drawings from our architect in a minute to show you what we would propose as the use of that facility. So the, the location we're proposing to use is somewhat segregated from the shopping center and it also is adjacent to some residential areas in the community. So would not be, the school would not be disturbed by the adjacent uses of the shopping center or from the community surrounding us. With that, I'm going to ask Ben to introduce himself to you. And does he have the ability to share his screen? I know that you have.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask him to share his screen and show a couple of images that we've developed. He's going to talk through them, then I'm going to address a few more issues and then, of course, we'll be welcome to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks. As Brian mentioned, my name is Ben Nicholson. I'm an architect with JB Nicholson Architecture in Yeaden. And anyway, I developed a series of conceptual images for how the, how the charter school could work in a particular site. I guess what, once I share my screen, I'll start with some images of the site. So let me figure out here. Here we go, screen. And screen two. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great, okay. So where my cursor is, this is the portion of the shopping center in question. And I'm going to zoom in and show a little bit of the topography in that we have here a retaining wall with an incorporated linear garage that separates this lower parking lot from the upper parking lot and other retail uses. Presently, this lower area to the building is used as a warehousing for the furniture store. The intent is to make the entrance to the charter school down at this lower level. And to, of course, use the paved area as well for all the parking and traffic needs that the school will have. I'm going to switch it over now to my drawings. Okay. All right, this is a shot of the before and after. Of course, here on, on the top side, we have the before. We have some conditions to work with here, loading dock and lots of roll-up doors and a blank wall from the linear garage. We propose to improve the site by opening up the garage doors with new window system, introduce maybe some color as well in that window system. Here's the front entrance. And we have a bus queuing area over here to the right along the garage wall, an opportunity perhaps for mural. And capping off the loading dock with a deck with trellis structures to bring in some, some greenery into the site. Up here, we would have signage per the zoning requirements and as well some lighting along the top edge here to brighten up the space. So then, another major portion of our initial conceptual study was showing how the parking and traffic concerns would fit with the existing paved area. We did an initial plan to get a classroom count from which the part of the parking calculation is derived. And that there are two spaces, I believe, per, per classroom. And we have 20 classrooms. So that's 40. And let's see, I believe, let's see, there was also a, a number of spaces, one per employee, 30 employees. So we have, we set out to prove we have 70, at least 70 spaces within this existing area and that buses can easily ingress and egress from the site, make their turns, drop off children safely, et cetera, and as well a circulation route for parents to drop off and pick up. So we used the updated parking standards, the dimensions that you have for minimum, the minimum area for a parking space. And we're able to come up with, let's see, we had 71 spaces, standard size spaces. And in addition, we'd be required two minimum handicap, but we provide three. Actually, no, we provide four. And now, so we have a total of 75 parking spaces. And anyway, this site plan is to show, is basically to prove that. And I suppose, well, that's, that's about it. And I, I guess I'll turn it over at this point to for questions.
Well, I have a few more things to address, but Ben, thanks so much. I appreciate it. So in order to address the the requirements of your ordinance, the parking requirements for an elementary school are, and the traffic flow that we anticipate would actually be less than what a retail establishment in that space would require. We were trying to open a retail establishment. We'd actually need more parking and the anticipated traffic flow would be greater as a school operation. You know, traffic generally flows twice a day, in in the morning and then out in the afternoon and into the evening, depending on how many students stay for after-school care. The number of employees coming and going, as he said, we estimate 30 to probably to maybe 40 employees as we elevate to our full use. The business hours would be compatible with the current use of the facility as, you know, school hours and the business hours in, in the shopping center are, are not contrary to one another. Transportation requirements as required, required to be considered under the ordinance, as we demonstrated in the conceptual drawings, there's plenty of room for buses to come and go and drop students off and the ability to also have parents have an area to pick up and drop off students in a safe manner. Because the parking area is segregated from the rest of the shopping center, it won't impede or interfere with the traffic flow of the rest of the retail shopping center. You know, we have the benefit of being somewhat isolated from the remainder. I will be candid with you. At the planning commission last week, they did ask a question about entry and exit at the base of the ramp that comes from the upper portion of the shopping center to the side street, the road that services this portion of the shopping center. You know, we have not, we're here tonight asking for the permission to develop the site for use as a school. That would certainly be something we would have to review and address with the planning commission when we actually come with our final drawings or design drawings for the site and any improvements that are required. I can assure you, my client's concern for the safety of their students is paramount. And so whatever might be required to address that issue from a transportation or traffic concern, we would certainly address. There's not a high turnover rate for a school. Once the kids are in, they're in for the day. And once the kids are gone home, then there's no, no more traffic back and forth. You could anticipate when we are still within the pandemic restrictions. And so most meetings at this point are, are all meetings actually are still virtual, but over time, we anticipate those restrictions being lifted. But we would not have a lot, we would never anticipate a late evening event at the school. There will be some board meetings and parent teacher evenings and student event evenings at the school. Nothing that would be a disturbance to either the shopping center or the surrounding community. You know, I don't anticipate that the school would create a tendency to introduce criminal activity into the, to their area, which is one of the concerns that's raised in the ordinance. As a school, it's not going to create any nuisance for the community surrounding us. There is a buffer of trees and the creek next to us, which would avoid any disturbance of the neighboring community from children playing during the school day. And as far as use of the facility or its utility, you know, we, my client has made this application to the district and, and to the Commonwealth Appeals Board because we believe that a charter school would be a benefit to the community. The opportunity for students to have choice in their education is important to us. And this school in particular is modeled after a successful school that runs out of the William Penn School District. You know, our proposal to serve 20 classrooms, what, you know, have 20 classrooms in a K to eight model ultimately would serve, you know, anywhere from 400 to 500 students on average. But the facility that we have is well-suited to accommodate that amount of space and that number of students over time. We believe that the permission given for this use of the facility would be a benefit to the community. I welcome the opportunity to answer any questions you might have or to review any of the information that we've shared with you.
Members of the council, um, this is your opportunity to ask questions.
Ben, maybe you could stop sharing your screen unless, unless you have a question about that, just so I can see the members of the council as they speak.
There we go.
Thank you.
Hi, sir. This is Council President Papaleo. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that. I had some issues with my computer earlier, so I had to segue from my cell phone to the computer. The, the era of Zoom, right? So is, is this facility, is it a two-story facility? Because it looked like the, the layout that I was looking at, it looks like just the bottom floor of what used to be, for those of us who are natives, would call the old McCrory's, the old McCrory storefront. So it looks like just the basement of that. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. And I, whether it matters or not, I grew up in Sharon Hill and I, I remember the McCrory's.
Very good. So I guess my other question is, if this is K through eight. So I guess my other question is, if this is K through eight.
Yes, it would originally, the proposal that was submitted for consideration starts as a K through five charter. And then we would add a grade one year over the next until we get to K to eight kindergarten through eighth grade. And then that would be the maximum capacity, that would be the maximum age served by the school. So we're talking six to 14 year olds on our campus day to day.
Okay, where would they recess?
So our plan would be to have one, a recreational use space inside the building. There's a, if you look at that initial design drawing, there was a small space inside for that. And also, we would want to improve the side of the facility. There's a but it's would be considered the back of the building, but on the side of the building there, there's an area that we would use. And then we'd like to improve that for recreational space on good weather days as well.
Is that a number? That's adjacent to the creek, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, adjacent to the creek. I have a number of clients who have faced this issue of how to create recreational space for children in in a difficult environment, whether it's in a city or just in a space that like I have another client that actually operates out of a similar facility, used to be a warehouse on one side and it's retail on the other end, and they created space in the building for that use. And that was it's well used and that's there are the the solutions that we would look toward to create recreational space.
Yeah, I mean, just as a, as an idea for you, I've toured because one of my dear friend's children goes to Friends Select School in the city, very expensive school. I couldn't even afford to look if I were a parent. So but I went, yeah, I was, I picked up my nephew there one day and that, you know, we toured the building quickly and on their roof is a full sized football field, which was remarkable. So roof spaces are an interesting concept too. I don't know, just throwing that out there. But again, this is only, this is only a single story.
Well, to the extent that additional space becomes available for our use, we would welcome that opportunity to expand and I don't know what the condition of the roof is and what availability they might have, but if the landlord was willing. It would certainly be something we would consider.
I mean, they cage the man, of course, so that they're
Prevent balls from flying over and kids from falling off.
Yeah, yeah, but just throwing that out there. But um, yeah, I just, there's, I guess, the questions that that I had.
Hi, Brian. This is Nick Waters.
How are you, Mr. Waters? It's good to see you.
House is wondering, what's up with security today about putting children over there? Is it surveillance like? Personal security cameras?
So exterior surveillance on our facilities is commonplace. There are programs through the federal government and the Commonwealth that will allow us the opportunity to obtain security equipment for in entry and egress from the building, but also cameras so that we can see what's going on inside and outside of our facility. We have used, it's called an E-rate program and it allows us to invest in technology to improve a facility for our use. And so we would, as I said in my presentation, the safety of the students is of paramount interest to us. I'll be candid, we do not. The client, most of the clients that I work with don't employ metal detectors for our students. I subscribe, invoke his name, but I subscribe to the Larry Jones School of Thought on that. Larry's a head of the Richard Allen Prep School. And he said, you know, three grandmothers sitting at the front door are far more effective than one security guard. And so he employs members of the community who know these students and will get to know them as they work for us. In order to ensure their safety within the building. And then we all, of course, have locks on our doors. That won't allow people will have to buzz to get in the building and check in in our office. All of those procedures are are well prescribed to ensure that nobody comes to our facility who we don't know about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is Mayor Brian. Do you have any plans on the walk-ons, how to keep them out of the shopping center and off of that ramp? Because you're gonna have a lot of young kids. That's what I'm concerned about.
So our plan to keep the kids from wandering through the shopping center is multifaceted. One, pickup, you know, bus transportation for students will be pick up and drop off at our front door. So they'll come out of our building on the bus. Number two, for students that are being picked up and dropped off by parents, parents have to come and take possession of those kids. If there are students who walk from our school and in this community, there may be some. We would have our after school. Our teachers serve after school in facilitating exit from the facility and our policy will be that they exit the property at the end of the day. They go home or they stay for aftercare. I will tell you that about 60% of our students participate in our aftercare program. At the other schools that are in similar communities, just, I mean, parents work, they have jobs. And so when they participate in aftercare, a parent has to come pick them up because the the transportation is not available from the district at that time. So the bulk majority of our students come to and leave school either by transportation provided by the district or pick up and drop off by their parents.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are there, I'm sorry, Kyle, go ahead.
This is Councilman Willis. I had two questions for you. One, and this may just be the the kind of preliminary nature of that drawing. Looked like there was only one exit and entrance, like just one door. Is that the case? Or is that just?
No, we'll have to comply with the zoning requirements for a school building and we'll have to have multiple exits from the facility. That that was, that drawing is just a, this is what we wanted to look like. What if we were granted permission to use the facilities, but we will have to develop the facility to comply with the code regarding schools, number of exits, number of entrances, all of those kinds of requirements.
All right. And then the second question I had for you, if at full capacity, how many students is this school capable, would this school be capable of serving? Like, what is the max capacity?
In that facility, we would anticipate two two classes per grade. And there are nine grades, so that would be 18 classes of between 20 and 25 students. We'll have extra classrooms for providing services to special ed students and things like that. So I would anticipate between 350 and 450 students. Would be the the facility capacity and that's based on the school code requirements for square foot per child and the amount of space we have available. If we had an opportunity to grow in that space beyond that. At some point in time, you know, we would obviously have to come back, propose that addition and what it would look like. And but I would say between 350 and 450 is the number of students.
And what is the proposed operation time, like the school hours?
School hours would ordinarily, early preschool care, before school care, pick up. I'm gonna look to my client to correct me if I'm mistaken on that, but before school care starts at 7:15, I believe. And aftercare ends at 6:00 PM. So that's the 5:15?
5:15, yeah.
All right, 5:15. So 7:15 to 5:15 would be the operation time. As I said, there would be you know, 20 or so, 25 evenings a year for parent teacher night, school board meetings, things of that nature.
Before we proceed, sir, your Zoom tag has you as Mr. Adam, the client, but could you identify yourself? Your name and first and last name spelled properly for the actual record, please?
My, my name is Adam Kenz, A D A M. First name, last name is K E N Z. I am one of the board members for the proposed charter school.
Thank you very much. I know it's tough to, it's tough to keep in mind, we're doing a record and on a Zoom, but we are.
I'm grateful. Thank you.
Those are all of my questions. Thank you.
Any other, any other members have questions?
Nope, Kyle got one of my questions.
So I have a few more. Sure. So one of my major concerns. It is really, it's my major concern is that the the egress, the vehicle egress in and out of the facility is the, both the entry and the exit point is one of the major arterials in and out of town. The other major arterial in and out of town has Delcroft Elementary School on it. So in the mornings, those of us who live in Delmar Village are well trained to know that between the hours of 8:00 AM or seven, what is it, 7:15 AM for the school buses for the high school to, you know, till about 9:30, that we can't use school lane. Our go to is Grant Road. That is along Grant Road. So I know it has the 1801 Delmar Drive address. But the 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 pathway in and out to what I do like about it is that it is the segregated parking lot. This was not the original site that I thought it was going to be. I thought it was going to be a different building in that same complex, but I thought it'd be a different building. This is, this is probably a better place for it than the initial one. But my concern still remains in it that it's still like the, there's, it seems like there's a, you know, an ability for, you know, sort of a bus pass. Or, you know, a bus lane to to sort of, you know, caravan children in and out of the school. But I still foresee the possibility of there being car pileups of moms and dads. You know, dropping kids off in the morning. In the afternoon, it's not so much a problem because most of us work well past 3:15. When when most schools dismiss, the mornings are my real, real worry. That's one of my questions.
Sure. So if we were granted the use, obviously, one of the requirements for us coming back for approval of any renovation of the facility is going to have to be a a full traffic study on the impact into the community. I will share with you from my experience that because we're an elementary school and because most of the students are transported to school by bus. We don't get a ton of parent drop off. At least in the other schools that I've worked with in similar communities. If buses are available for kids, then parents like, you know, and they like to use the bus. I do understand your concern. We want to do whatever we can to alleviate any disruption of, you know, the community during the entry into school in the morning and the exit in the afternoon. The planning commission did raise a similar concern about the entry and exit and the impact on traffic. I don't have a full traffic study to address that concern or kind of understand it, but I am conscious of it. And what I can share with you is my client's commitment to make sure that whatever it is we might need to do, whether that's control our exit from the facility in order to allow the community to flow easier or to assign staff members to ensure that that are any buses or parents, like one of the reasons we designed on the drawing that Ben did for us. A place for buses to collect was we wanted to make sure as buses are dropping off that parents could continue to flow and not create that traffic. Yeah, we wanted to make sure that we had the two lanes available so that we weren't creating a situation where as a bus is letting 15 or 20 kids off, 16 parents are backed up behind them. There'll be that, you know, separate lane for parents to use in order to keep the traffic flowing. That's something we did think about and anticipate as a concern, especially because, but beyond that, all I can tell you is we're committed to doing whatever we can to alleviate the the traffic problems for the community. I can't say that there won't be any, because that would, that would be untrue.
Yeah, it would. I mean, I expect there's got to be any, you know, any new propriety in that, and that is going to bring, is going to draw, it's going to draw traffics of some kind. I just, what I don't want to see is I don't want to see parents queuing up all along that part of you know, Glen Olden Avenue and Grant Road and outside of people's apartments honking and cursing at each other because they can't get in or out of a parking spot and like the kind of stuff that I've seen on on school lane, like we can't have that in the, in the only other major arterial out of town. That's my, that my major, my major concern. So I was happy with, I'm satisfied with with the response on that. My other question is, so like our local school district. You know, love them or hate them. Is governed by is governed by people in the community from the community, right? So my other question is, what what is sort of the governing apparatus of this school? I heard you mentioned something about a board of trustees. Are there, are there going to be positions on that board for people from our community or our school district? If this particular facility is to represent the Southeast Delco School District, I would think that they should have some sort of guaranteed representation on a board of governors that governs that 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 organization. Just my thought on that.
Yeah, sure. So the, the way the charter school law is written, a charter school has to be operated by a nonprofit entity. Governed by a board of trustees. Our application had members of the Southeast Delco Community sitting as board members. And we are committed to maintaining either parent representation for parents in our school from the community or community member representation on our board because it's important that the charter school be operated by professionals. And that the board of trustees reflect the community and people who have experience and knowledge in the area. So Mr. Kenz is a very experienced charter school board member. He has served the charter community for more than a decade. But other board members who were unfortunately not able to join us this evening are members of the Southeast Delco School District Community. Because we wanted to make sure that we do have community representation in our school. We are not a for-profit entity. So I am sure some of you read in the papers about, you know, businesses that come in and run charters and take money out of the community and put it in people's pockets. And there was the operator out in Western Pennsylvania that bought a jet. They go, that's not who we are. I don't, I don't work for those guys. I never have. You know, I work for independent
Or fund political PACs for, for, you know, for
I don't work for, I don't work for people who donate to PACs, at least none that I'm aware of or form them. I can, I can at least tell you from my, I'm a lawyer who works for independently run nonprofit entities operating schools in communities that where choice and education is important. So as a school, as an entity, we have representation on our board of members from the Southeast Delco School District Community. And we will always have representation on our board of members in the community. It's it's really, it's not required under the law, under the charter school law. But it is because how can you operate a school in a community with no connection to that community? It would be ineffective, you know, in essence, I could see us hearing you know, phrases like carpetbagger or, you know, people who are just coming in to run a school and not part of our community. So when this group got together before they ever hired me. They made sure that they had members of your community on their board. I don't live in Sharon Hill anymore. I lived, I grew up there, but I, I don't live in that community anymore. So I don't want you to think that I still live there. I but I am familiar with that community. I know how important community is in that area of Delaware County, because it's where I grew up.
Good answer. So my, my other question is, are, does this organization operate schools in other communities?
So
Or other neighboring districts?
Yeah. So no, because we are, the way the charter school law is written, each charter school has to be operated by an independent body. So each school is run by its own board of trustees. There are schools that have affiliations like, if you're familiar with the KIP network of schools, they have a couple of hundred charter schools across the United States. They have five in the city of Philadelphia right now. I will tell you that this school is modeled after a school that runs in the William Penn School District. In candor, I represent that school as well. Mr. Kenz was a board member. There is a board member of that school as well. But members of that community came to him and said, we'd like to open a school like this one in Southeast Delco. So we opened a separate corporation, nonprofit, we developed a new board. And then that is the applicant. So no, we're not run by any overarching organization or anything, but we are modeling our no, we're not run by any overarching organization or anything, but we are modeling ourselves after the school that runs in the William Penn School District.
So even though they're, so let me understand this correctly. And this is not, I'm, I'm, it's, it's just, I'm learning, I'm learning.
Yeah.
So both schools may, for all intents and purposes, have the same governing actors, but in a different, a different corporation. So like if Mr. Ken's could be on a governing body of both, it's, both organizations separately of one another.
Yeah, sorry. He's the only overlap on the two boards.
Okay.
The board of the William Penn School has five other members that either live in that community or work in that community in William Penn.
That's what I was, that's, that's what I was jostling for.
Yeah, there, the other four members of our founding board in Southeast Delco are members either of the Southeast Delco Community or they, the one member used to work on the board at William Penn in the William Penn Schools, he left that board and then joined this board to form the school here. So the only overlap is
Mr. Ken's.
Ken's. The rest of them are entirely separate. They have separate board meetings. They have separate everything, separate corporate entities, identifications, they're, they're in.
Mr. Ken's, what, what is your title on that, on the other? What, what, are you, does the board have a chairman, a president? How does, what's the?
Can, can I show you uh, my screen, all the names of the founders for the Vision Academy in Falkraft?
Yes.
So do you see the names here? These are the names. Only one name dropped. My name is not here because one name changed. And I replaced this person, Ms. Evans. So you see there are two board members living in Falkraft. Others are all from, you know, in Southeast Delco from different townships.
And Dr. Anthony Mauring uh, was the board member who used to work for Vision Academy in William Penn. He's no longer on that board. He came with Mr. Ken's to, to found this board.
Yeah. And so, I mean, a board usually has, hello?
Yeah.
Yeah. My, so it felt like my, my computer went blank for a moment there. So a board usually has a, you know, president, a vice president or a chairman and a vice chairman and um, are we that involved yet? Do we know who's what on where?
We have founding committee, board president, uh, secretary officers, but once the charter is approved, those, you know, we will be, you know, re-electing the officers for the board.
So he's asking who's the president? Uh, so Mr. Ken's is the president. We have to talk one at a time, Adam. Mr. Ken's is the president of the board of the William Penn School.
Okay. And who is the president of the founding organization here at Falkraft?
Uh, Dr. Anthony Mauring.
Okay. Dr. Mauring. Okay. I see. All right. Um, that's all I got. Cool. Thank you, guys. Uh, anybody else have any questions for the, the, the two gentlemen?
Andy? Yes, I was just wondering um, when accepting applications for charter schools, because from what I understand, it's an application process for students to be accepted. What areas are we looking at for when accepting students? Are we doing just Southeast Delco School District? Are we just, are we doing all over? We doing Philly? Um, how is that working?
Sure. Um, the way the application right reads, we will fill the school with any student from Southeast Delco School District who elects to come to our school. We don't have, um, you say application. I, I don't want you to think there's a criteria for admission because there isn't. The only, the only criteria for getting into the school is saying, I'd like to go to your school. Um, and, and we have no choice but to let you in as long as we have a seat for you. Um, we are required to give students from Southeast Delco School District first option on the seats in the school. If there are seats not filled, which uh, in candor, I don't expect to be the case because the number of families from Southeast Delco who expressed interest in coming to our school is substantial. Uh, well beyond the number that would fill the school, but if there was an empty seat available or if a student moved to another district, um, we would be permitted to readmit that student if they were already in the school. If there's an empty seat and there is no student from Southeast Delco that wants to come to our school, we are permitted to admit students from other districts and we have to use a lottery system for that. So we put all the names of those students in a hat, each grade, we pull their names. We establish a waiting list and that's how those students are admitted. But students from Southeast Delco always push to the top of that lottery list because we're required to give them preferential admission.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And also, how is that going to affect the uh, tenants of Southeast Delco School District in general? If a lot of kids are starting to come to the charter schools, the charter school?
So you know, if students from Southeast Delco elect to come to our school, then they would not be going to school at Southeast Delco School District. Um, uh, you know, I know that Southeast Delco I know that Southeast Delco School District has had difficulties uh, financially or, uh, over the last several years, and they are working hard to correct those issues. But I, it would just mean that a student that otherwise would go to Southeast Delco could come, would come to our school. Um, the way the funding formula works for charter schools, um, if the Southeast Delco School District spends ten thousand dollars to educate a student and that student elects to come to the charter school, we get about seventy five hundred dollars and the school district keeps the rest.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Alex, I think we've, and correct me if I'm wrong, anyone? Correct me if I'm wrong. I think we've, we've, we've posed all the questions we had.
So, uh, for, um, well, just, are there any members of the public that have any comments? Or have any questions?
Alex, if I may, this is Lisa Catania, and, and it's just something that, that is not necessarily a, a, a question that an engineer would typically ask, but um, in, you're talking that you're having pre hours care and then after hours care. Are you proposing to have hot lunches and breakfasts and things like that? So you'll have a full cafeteria in, in the facility? And I have to apologize because I wasn't able to pull up the um, drawing to, to verify whether there was a cafeteria uh, with a, a kitchen area on, on there. And, and that's important for, I think, everybody to hear as well.
Sure. Um, our proposal, uh, and our plan would be to have uh, whatever students would qualify for uh, hot lunch program or the before school care or the after school care program. Uh, there are federal dollars available to uh, provide breakfast and lunch for those students. Um, we would have those, we would have a kitchen prep area, but not a full kitchen. Uh, the prep area would be used for, we would have the food delivered and then warmed or kept warm and so on the days that it's a hot line and then served to the students. There is a multi-purpose space that we would use for uh, our cafeteria space during the lunch periods. Um, so it's not a full commercial kitchen. Uh, it's a, you know, a, a small kitchen with uh, heat uh, ovens for heating food and keeping food warm. That is, we would contract with a company who would deliver those food, that food to us on a day-to-day basis. That would be both the before school and the lunch program food deliveries.
Okay, so, so just as a, a quick follow-up, because I know we've been at this for a while. The, the students would not have the ability to leave the school at lunchtime to go out to lunch?
Correct. Once the students in our facility, they are our responsibility until they either get on the bus to go home or until a parent picks them up at the end of the day or a, an authorized adult. Uh, sometimes grandparents are on pickup, sometimes aunts and uncles. It depends on, on who's in the school. But no, students don't. There's no going home for lunch from our school.
Or to the Popeyes.
Or to the Popeyes. No, there's no leaving our campus to go get lunch someplace else. Um, that's not permitted. Uh, that would not be permitted and we would not have that, uh, for a, a plethora of reasons. That's just wouldn't be acceptable.
Okay. And then just the last question, and it's really walkability, uh, since you may have students that, that are walking. How would you propose, um, because there, we don't have the kind of, of system and in that particular area for students walking. Uh, would you be proposing flashing signals, maintenance of those signals, pedestrian, pedestrian crossings, those types of things to keep the kids safe?
So what we've done uh, at other facilities is worked with the community to put in whatever improvements are needed in order to ensure the students are safe. We also utilize our staff. Uh, you know, before school, you know, uh, coming into the building as directing traffic on the campus, but also ensuring that students walking, if there are any uh, use the crosswalks and cross at the appropriate locations. Um, you know, student safety has to be, uh, along with the quality education are top priorities. And so, you know, we're, we're going to have to, as I said previously, look at the facility in planning this out and work with the, with Falkraft. Uh, if you give us permission to use this facility, which we certainly hope you do, to figure out the best way to ensure student safety and the least disruption of the traffic in the community. That's something we're, that would be part of our proposal for planning the site if we're granted permission to use it this way. Um, we're here tonight to talk about step one, which is can we do this? Then we need to come back and, and talk about the how. How do we make that work so that it doesn't disrupt the community? Any more than is necessary.
Thank you.
No, thank, I, I, Alex, if I could, thank you so much for your questions and for your time tonight. I am grateful for your attention and for your insight. It's, uh, it's refreshing. I'll be candid. So thank you.
Do we have, um, any other members of the public that wish to offer any comments or questions? Right, hearing none. Um, and Brian, I'm just going to go ahead and make the assumption that, uh, you don't have any further witnesses or evidence to put on at this point?
No, I do not. Thank you.
All right. Um, so counsel before you, uh, as always in the conditional use hearing, you have two options at this point now that, uh, the evidence has been rested. Um, you can make a motion to close the hearing, um, or of course alternatively, you can always make a motion to continue the hearing to a later date. But based on the fact that we've gone through all of the testimony witnesses and there's nobody that has achieved party status or asked for it, uh, of course, I wouldn't recommend doing that tonight. So uh, motion to close the hearing. And like I said, uh, you would issue your, uh, written decision on whether you're going to grant the use within forty-five days from, uh, today's date. So um, option's yours. Uh, if you want to entertain a motion to close the hearing, um, I will not stop you.
Like to make a motion to close the hearing. Do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed. Motion carried. And Adam says, meeting, this, uh, hearing is closed.
Perfect.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. You have a great day. Um, moving on to the engineer's report, uh, Ms. Catania, I'm sorry to have kept you so long. I know you're probably not having a great day. You've told us that. So, um, I would love it if you, you know, if you, if you wanted to take the engineer's report, you don't have to stay for any, any time after that, if it's, if it's, if it's too much trouble for you.
Sorry to cut you off. Just one more thing before we finish this up. Bridget, was there anything that you missed or you needed from us?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry, Bridget. I didn't, I didn't know to ask that. I apologize.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, Jeff.
Yes.
I have an appointment I gotta keep, so I'm gonna be leaving.
That, that's okay, Mayor. I understand.
I just wanted to let you know.
Yep, I understand. This, this, uh, hearing went a little longer than I expected. Um, and I apologize to all members. Lisa, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I, I, I appreciate you putting me in front of the part, the audience's participation. Um, I just have a few things. Uh, I believe that Mr. Willis will talk about the, the building, so I'll leave that up to, to Councilman Willis. Um, the road program started. Uh, we've had a few hiccups, one including a sanitary sewer problem that we have that, uh, is currently uh, being worked on. We have a, a break, of course, in the village where we are planning on, on doing work. Um, my office in my stead has, uh, Sean has, has taken care of getting Delcor out to do the video inspection. Uh, Dan Archdeacon from my office, who's one of my engineers, uh, has taken on the responsibility of speaking with contractor to get whatever is necessary completed prior to the milling and paving, um, of that particular roadway. Um, so we are moving forward with the road program. We may have to change the schedule a little because Heather was one of the interior roads. I'm hoping that we can get that, um, sanitary sewer break fixed quickly so that we don't need to change a schedule because we don't.
I don't want to interrupt you, but they were working this morning on the break. It's, they have the road dug up on Taylor at the bottom of.
They did do that. Okay.
Yeah, it's all dug up. They've been there all day.
I know Charlie Frank was over there doing it. I wasn't sure how far he had gotten, so I didn't want to report it. Thank you so much.
Pipes. Yeah, there are pipes on the road, so they are.
Yeah, okay. And Sean probably could, could have, have chimed in, so I appreciate that. Um, the other part of this is, is in, in doing our due diligence with, with Kehoe, we found that Delmar Drive, Kehoe does not have on their list, nor was it on a, a list that the, that the borough, um, received contribution for. So right now, we have a, a cost estimate of thirty thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, which would be a change order to Damon's contract. If Pico determines that they would rather give us the monies, uh, for that work or Kehoe, who is the contractor that is working for ILS, um, does the work. So right now, I'm not sure where that stands. As of five o'clock today, I did not see anything from Pico, uh, whether they are going to give us the contribution in lieu. Or we will, uh, at that point, tell them Kehoe has to do curb to curb. Um, one of the things that, that the manager had asked was that all of Delmar Drive be completed. In taking a look at that, we're looking at ninety thousand dollars to do the, the, from the creek to school lane. Um, anybody that has driven Delmar Drive notes that from the creek to Bennington is in good shape. Um, as a matter of fact, it, it looks like it's, it's almost new. Um, my suggestion and my recommendation to the board or to council is to do from Bennington to school lane if it's necessary that we do that. That's the direction that I have given Pico. They're looking at from their end, whether they be completing it or not. Um, that would be a change order to, to Damon's contract. I don't know at this point whether we want to try to take some action on that tonight. However, um, he's not going to, Damon is not going to be completed, um, before your next meeting. So we should, we could be doing that at your next meeting, formally doing a change order for that work. Delmar Drive will be the last street that would be done as part of the road program anyway. Delmar Drive will be the last street that would be done as part of the road program anyway. So I just wanted to give you that information. Delcora is working on the small sewer and water project. Uh, they have the flow meter in hand. They are currently working with AJ Juric. They have a contract, so we're working under the municipal bidding process that Delcora has done for those services. So we are in compliance with, with our bidding requirements and, uh, we should have that work completed. Have it, have the contract work completed and invoiced. And Donna, I'm gonna ask for a quick turnaround because we'll have to have it paid in order for us to get the thirty-four thousand dollars in grant money by the end of June. So, um, we're working at a quick pace to get that project completed. And I believe at this point, that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
I, uh, it's short, or I'm sorry Kyle.
Go ahead, Sean. You're good.
Uh, just one thing Lisa, just to kill our, so I don't have to call you tomorrow. Uh, just got a phone call from Charles Jr. In the past half hour, they just wrapped up the repair at, uh, Taylor and Heather is complete.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to, you thought there was anything important for the new, uh, Borough Hall Building? Just in case I missed something, since you won't be here later, you, you can go ahead and talk about it if you.
Well, um, I know that, that Andrew has been trying to get the, the, the contractor to provide the information that we need that will finalize the contract for the execution of the contract. Um, last week I put an email to the contractor asking for not only the performance and labor material bond, the insurance certificates, the schedule and the schedule of submittals that's required under the contract. I have yet to hear from him. Um, I believe the solicitor, uh, can speak further as to other communications that's, that's been had. Once we have that information, we can give a notice to proceed. We don't have a fully executed contract at this point. I can't give them a notice to proceed. And we have not seen any submittals. I've contacted Bob Lynn's office. Everything is going to come through me, uh, for record as borough record. And then we'll disseminate all the information from our office. So we'll have record when it came in, when it went to that particular entity and what response we got. So we do have a good record of, of how we're going to move forward. Um, we also contacted the girls' club because there are, is some, um, materials in the old building that is going to be demolished and I certainly don't wanna have them come in and demolish the building and anyone that wanted some of those materials that I believe are girls' club, um, possessions, uh, destroyed. So we're, we're giving them the opportunity to get in, uh, get what they, they should have, um, or what they want. And then we'll, we'll demolish that particular building once the contract's ready. So that's where we stand right at the moment. Um, I'm hoping that we do get an answer rather quickly from, from FX so that we can move forward because we're into the end of May at this point. And, uh, we'll be through a winter. Hopefully they'll be undercover and we won't have any issues with completing the project. Uh, that's where, that's where I, I, I think we are at this point.
And then Alex, you, uh, just would try, I mean, whether or not, what details we wanna share, we've taken next steps on the fact that we haven't received those materials, right?
Right, yeah, we sent formal written communication to them, um, with a kind of a drop dead deadline to respond with those documents, so. We shall see, um, that was sent yesterday. Um, I'm, you know, hopeful for a response and those documents in order.
Alright, very good. So we'll, we'll probably touch base on that stuff again, probably in greater detail, uh, Councilman Willis during the new construction committee line item.
I mean, that's the, but the, it's the majority of the details. We kinda jumped the gun on that, so. I wanted to do it while Lisa was here just because obviously there's insights there that we would have missed had she left, so.
I appreciate that.
Cool. Alright, Lisa, is that all you got? Actually, that was, that was a pretty good report, so.
Did it, uh, do, um, and, uh, I'll see you in a couple of weeks. I appreciate the courtesies.
Absolutely. I'll talk to you soon.
Okay, take care.
Alright, bye bye. Alright, moving on to public finance administration, I'd like to, uh, request a motion from the body of council to approve the bill list for the, uh, month of April twenty twenty-one. Uh, actually, before we do that, are there any questions on the bill list? No?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries to approve the bill list for April twenty twenty-one. I'd like to, uh, request a motion from the body of council to, uh, approve the treasurer's report, um, for the month of April twenty twenty-one. Open that for discussion before, uh, we have, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, before we vote, is there any discussion on, any questions on the treasurer's report?
I, I just, real quick, who was the second? Two people spoke at once.
Uh, I heard Councilman Waters. Is that correct?
Yes.
Alright, who made the motion?
Councilwoman Isaac, maybe Isaac.
Alright. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to request a motion from the body of council to approve the April sixth, twenty twenty-one workshop meeting minutes and the April twentieth, twenty twenty-one council meeting minutes.
Motion.
Second, motion's been second, motion's been made and seconded it, second, seconded? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Sorry about that folks. Moving on to Public Works, Councilman Willis.
Um, nothing for this section, but I will have the item, uh, for new business, um, to discuss.
Cool. Alright, moving on to public safety, Councilmember Skowski.
Motion to approve the police chief's report for the month of April twenty twenty-one.
Do we have a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the fire chief's report for the month of April twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the farm marshal's report for the month of April twenty twenty-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to approve the sale of a used police, police vehicle and a purchase of a new police vehicle.
Yeah, can we discuss this first?
Yes, yes. Uh, so here's what happened. So, the police rented a police vehicle to, I believe it was, um, I believe it was the county and they, they were able to pair a need up with a product and turn a profit on that for something to the tune of twelve thousand dollars. And we're last meeting, two thousand of that went into their sunshine fund and ten thousand of it went into our general fund. The sale of the police vehicle should generate, I don't know, Chief, are you on the line? Police Chief, there. So what's the sale of the, of the used vehicle?
Nine thousand dollars.
So we have roughly nineteen thousand dollars to play with? And the police would like to put that nineteen thousand dollars toward the vehicle and they're asking for us to sort of fill the, the gap of, of the cost, I guess, for whatever the remainder is for the new vehicle. What's the total cost of the new vehicle?
The total cost is around thirty-three thousand for the new vehicle and then we have to get the lights and everything put into it.
Alright, so thirty-three K. So, so nineteen thousand from, so what's, so what's the difference there? Hang on a moment.
Fourteen.
Okay. Yeah. Right. So, is there an option to, do we, is, is it a used vehicle or a brand new?
It, the, the vehicle that we were going to look at purchase is a brand new vehicle.
Okay. Alright, so we're looking at another fifteen K with that. Alright, so that, that's the, that's the, the gist of the situation, Lee.
So, um, I apologize if I'm interrupting. Um, I assume then that this, the new vehicle would be, and it be meant to replace the vehicle we are selling. What is the stat, like what is the status of this vehicle that we're selling? Cause I, I know that we've purchased a vehicle already this year. Um, so is this vehicle like in dire need of replacement or is this just a, trying to get ahead of the game? Like what, what's the, what prompted this, you know, idea?
So what, what prompted this idea was, uh, the vehicle that is in question is our K nine vehicle. We, that vehicle was given to us by a car dealership, um, two thousand thirteen. That's not me, right?
No, in, in fact, anybody, if you're, if you're not the chief at this, at this point, please mute your, please use your mute function if you're not, if you don't have the floor.
So the vehicle that we were looking at, I see, like I said, was the K, is, is the K nine vehicle. That vehicle was given to us by a car dealership in two thousand thirteen, um, for the K nine use. I believe the vehicle has around forty thousand miles on it and to get, um, money out of that vehicle, uh, before it goes, you know, uh, in a couple of years or whatever else, uh, of getting nine thousand dollars out of a vehicle, I think would be a, a step in the right direction if we were gonna keep the K nine unit, which I believe we will. And going into a new vehicle and using nine thousand dollars from it and the ten thousand dollars that we, um, gained from the mer, uh, of using the other vehicle, uh, could offset. That was the reason for this giving ahead of a specialty unit.
Alright, so this would, I mean, so I'm just trying to, cause we have built into the, it built into the budget, the purchase of a new vehicle, which if I remember correctly, we ended up having to maneuver money around from other line items to afford the last vehicle. If I remember correctly, we had to move some from miscellaneous, cause it was a little bit more than the thirty-five thousand that we set aside the last time around. Um, so I'm just trying to, so effectively this is us just getting the vehicle that theoretically may or may not have been in the budget line item for next year. Seven months early? Or six months early, I guess?
Well, I mean, I don't know if they're asking for, for this vehicle and then for, and then asking to forego the next vehicle. I don't know if that was the, the proposition of the table. I think that the, the, the presentation here is that at forty thousand miles, the vehicle still can, commands something of a useful resale value. So, a- and you know, they did bring in an additional ten thousand dollars by being able to pair up a service with a need somewhere else in the county, which otherwise that, that piece of machinery might have sat or might have been used here at no gain. So they've come up with roughly nineteen thousand dollars of the cost of vehicle and I think their concern is the one that's been expressed to me is that the longer we hold on to this vehicle that they'd like to trade in or to put toward the, the, the purchase of a new one, that we're not gonna get as much on our return when we try to sell it another year from now. There's a point in a blue book value where there's a drop off. There's a, there's a dramatic crash in, in the resale value of a vehicle. I think we're sort of right at the cliff of that is the, is the gist of what I'm getting. But, um, am I correct, Chief, in that this was not intended to forego the purchase of the next vehicle next year? Is this, are you looking for this in addition to your next year's purchase?
That is correct. I was just looking at, um, the, the return on this vehicle at this point rather than in a couple of years or whatever else. And also, um, the money that we, um, received for the, the mer, uh, the COVID, um, rental of the merch, for the merch truck. Um, it was like a perfect storm, thought we could take advantage of it. That's what I was trying to do.
No, it was, and I think it was, it was certainly to our advantage. I think, I think you did well on that.
So I mean, in theory, technically, I mean, some of that additional income from the COVID would go to the additional cost of the last vehicle that we purchased. It was above the thirty-five thousand that we ended up spending on the last vehicle. And then I guess, what is the average lifespan of these, like what is the old, is this the oldest vehicle we have? What's the average lifespan? Like are, is forty thousand a large number or are we like? Because while yes, the blue book value of it will drop, the, the, if it has a high blue book value, that means it has a theoretically a longer, a long lifespan still ahead of it. So then you can get value out of it by just continuing to use it. So is there like, other than the fact that there will be a diminishing ability to sell it? Is there a reason why this vehicle in particular needs to go right now? Because, I mean, at least historically speaking, there has been the kind of expectation that a new vehicle gets cycled for the oldest one, no matter what. And that's kind of like just the way that it's been run historically. So when this vehicle gets to the oldest spot, it would just get replaced at that time anyway. So it's just we're now doubling up in a single year and I don't wanna just, I, I just wanna make sure we're, we've dotted all the i's and crossed all the t's before we jump into buying another, a second vehicle in the same year.
It's like. No, I totally understand and I get it. I, I totally understand that. This vehicle, uh, the vehicle that we have now is a Dodge Charger. Um, and the vehicle that we were looking at is a Dodge Ram truck, which is bigger, holds more stuff. If you ever looked at our K nine vehicle, all the stuff and tools and stuff for the K nine and training stuff is in the trunk of the vehicle. So it's packed to the gills, where if we had a pickup truck, it would be more of efficient with the K nine, um, I guess, uh, plan or, or what they use for training as such. And I think it would last a lot longer than, um, a Dodge Ram. And like I said, it's been a two thousand thirteen, so you're looking at forty thousand miles, I guess roughly on the vehicle. So it's not driven a ton, so it lasts a lot longer. And being of the Dodge Charger, the Dodge Chargers i- is, is a car. It's not, you know, um, and, and, and the very beginning years, there was problems with brakes and this and that. I don't think we have that issue with this vehicle at this time. Um, but I was just looking to get ahead of the curve of getting something out of a vehicle that we didn't even pay for, uh, that was given to us.
That's true. So this vehicle was never purchased. If this vehicle was gifted to the department.
Right. Is this the, is this the oldest vehicle or is the, are there older, like older service vehicles that effectively, I mean, uh, and not that there's a line, but is ahead of it in the line is I guess the question.
It, it is not the oldest vehicle right now. Um, I think the oldest vehicle is a two thousand nine, uh, Tahoe. So that's the oldest one and then the Crown Victoria, or not the Crown, that's the Ford Taurus is next.
So the, the Tahoe actually serves better function at the moment?
The Tahoe is a detective vehicle. Um, that's our detective drives that, so it's not in regular patrol. Um, so that, that's, that, that's the, that's Danny White using that vehicle.
So it just aged better because of usage in a sense?
Yeah, I, I think that was, that was, um, I believe the, uh, if I remember correctly, that was the vehicle that, um, the chief had, I think at one point. And then it moved its way down the line to myself and then now to, um, Detective White.
Okay.
I think to be, uh, I think that vehicle itself was, um, struck, uh, that detective vehicle struck a long time ago and we decided to take that out of the regular patrol and, and that's when it went to the detective.
Okay. I gotcha. Alright, um, makes sense. Um.
Can I ask a quick question?
I was just about to get to you, Donna. Yep.
The truck, the car that was already purchased for the police, when was that purchased and was it a truck?
It was purchased at the first meeting of the year in January. Um, I don't know when the actual paperwork went through.
Was it a truck or a car?
It was a truck. I think it was.
A twenty twenty.
It was a Dodge Ram truck. It was a Dodge Ram truck. We're getting the same. It was a Dodge Ram truck. It was a Dodge Ram truck. We're getting the same, the same, um, price for the, this truck as the other truck. Yes, it is the same truck.
Okay, so, cause I'm, I was just looking at the financial records, and that was under the, um, municipal building garage, and I think it needs to be under the police vehicle, so.
What was the total expenditure for that?
Thirty thousand one seventy-nine. From New Holland Auto Group. Does that sound correct?
Yes, yes.
Wasn't the Borough get a truck show?
Yeah, the Borough also got a F three fifty, though.
Which I think was like thirty-eight or thirty-nine thousand.
The much bigger truck.
Yes. So, I guess the perspective, so we were getting on this one. This was projected at about thirty-three thousand, which is a little higher than the thirty thousand one seventy-nine. Are you sure you didn't factor the thirty-three thousand in to include the alterations after delivery that we would need for like, if we needed to, you know, decal it, you know, Falkroft Police on the side or whatever?
No, I, I don't think that has anything to do with that. I think the thirty-three thousand is factoring in. Um, in the bed of this truck is two trays that for, um, storage, uh, for, uh, the K nine, um, stuff. So, it's readily available, the storage bin. I think that comes with it.
So, like a, like a factory installed sort of, okay?
It is a factory installed bins that slide out.
For the, the K nine, for the?
For the K nine, for the K nine use of, um, of the truck, yes.
Okay, alright, um. I mean, Donna, do we have the money?
Yeah, we have, we have, we have the money.
Is it, is it, uh, is it putting us in a bad way?
It should not put us in a bad way.
So, you would recommend that we could, are we, are we getting ahead of the curve if we're, if we're getting a better trade-in value for the, the, um, the Ram, or not the Ram, the, the Charger?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you think you're getting a better trade-in value and you need, what's it gonna be, fifteen thousand, you could afford that in the budget as far as, you know, we can, we know. So, we're updating the cash projections each month as we go, so there should be enough cash in there. If there's something happens that we don't know about.
So, like something catastrophic, right? Is that?
Or something that wasn't in the budget, like, we, you know, when we, we updated each month and the debt service, for example, wasn't in the original budget. So, we had to add that in, cause those payments have to get made. So, we're just updating the cash projections as we go.
Wait a minute, the debt service for what?
For the four million dollar loan.
That was included, pretty sure.
Okay, I have to look, cause I didn't see, there's a sixty-nine thousand dollar payment.
Andrew, I thought that we weren't paying any money on that loan until the drawdown began. I, we just had this conversation yesterday.
And yes. And the Borough's taken no money out of that account. I don't know.
Okay, so if that's the agreement, that you don't have to pay the interest, cause there's, according to the agreement, there's an interest payment due at sixty-nine thousand.
Is that, is it possible that that had something to do with the presumption that we would be working on the Borough Hall by now? Because the plan, the plan had been to start construction in September.
Cause if we're paying sixty-nine thousand dollars interest on a loan with no project that's even started, not a shovel in the ground, I want a new contractor yesterday. I, I'm gonna stop before I really lose my mind about it.
So, um, Donna, just, uh, that?
Stop right there, but that, I'm gonna tell you, everybody needs to know that that's where I'm at on that. So, if they're watching this meeting, they better get what we're asking for, and soon. Kyle, please go ahead.
Um, under, that was included under the four oh nine seven hundred capital expenditures for general government municipal building and garage. There should be two hundred and thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars in that line item, and I believe part of that was for the, um,
Building?
Debt service, yes.
Okay.
So?
So, that would be good.
Um, and then, so the other thing I was going to add, which I would have discussed, um, in the, uh, building section, the only other thing that I wanted to add is that after conversations with Steve and with, um, the architect and the networking and all of the electronic equipment for the new building is not a part of this bid in this deal. So, there is an expenditure outside of what we have currently bid out that we will need to pay, that we need to have money for, networking infrastructure, cameras, if we want key card swipes, that while may not be huge, it will not be small. Um, depending on how far we want to go. So, I don't want to look at what we have in, uh, in surplus and say that, oh, we have money, because there are other expenditures that are coming down the road in association with that to make the building what we want it to be, um, that we need to keep in mind. And that was something that I have learned since the last meeting, which is why I'm just bringing it up now. So, there are additional other expenditures out there that are kind of sitting on the horizon that will probably, will not be coming until next year.
Alright, so are we able to quantify that amount?
So, that will be dependent upon some discussions about what exactly the council would like, and also like, to what extent they would want the building to be, have certain technologies, and then also then having to most likely bid those things out as well. So, I can't necessarily quantify them as of yet. We're very early on. I'm just kind of throwing the red flag that there are some gotchas and minds still out there.
If the furniture, furniture, yeah, these are all things that are not gonna, yeah, that's fair.
There is, there, if we have money, we don't wanna, just cause we have money, we do have other expenditures that are gonna need to happen. Furnishing for the police department as well. I mean, they're, like, it's both, both sides, so.
So, the, the sixty-nine thousand dollar question that I have, Donna, is that are we spending sixty-nine thousand dollars on interest? Is that, is that a quarterly payment, a monthly payment? How much is this?
Semi-annual.
So, we, we have to pay sixty-nine thousand dollars biannually on a loan for a building that I can't even see happening yet. Is that, am I understanding that correct?
I have to look at the agreement, but that's what we, that's what we read in the agreement. Let me just say, yeah. So, I have the debt schedule here, and if the debt schedule that I have is correct, there's a sixty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollar fifty cent payment due June first. Then there's another sixty-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents due December first, if this debt schedule is accurate.
Yeah, Andrew, I knew that what you were telling me was, could not be, no, no bank says, hey, we'll put it in an account, and when you start spending it, that's when we'll start collecting interest. That's not how that works.
Maybe my misunderstanding here was that this had something to do with when we were expected to break ground, which obviously was last year. So, you know, even though they, we closed on this loan after the date that we planned to break ground, we still closed on the loan. What was it, Alex, at the end of December? Maybe early January? So, uh, so I think that might be part of the problem, is that we're now, you know, approaching six months after the funds were released to us.
Correct.
That, that might be what the issue, there was the expectation that we would break ground, um, at several different points early on in the year. Uh, I think that's been part of the issue.
So, please explain to the contractor that this is hurting the Borough financially this lag time. It, it's a problem for me. So, the taxpayers of Falkroft wanna turn around on their payment. We, we, we haven't seen anything happen yet on a project that needs to get started. So, I, I want it to, to end. I wanted to get, I want this waiting time. We need, we need a solution on this. Thank you.
Got it. So, I, um, as far as the truck goes, with that, with those things in mind, I'm just kind of hesitant to jump the, jump the kind of predetermined kind of how we did budgeting and laying things out necessarily, because I, I understand, like, there will still be a cost to the Borough on it. When we're not entirely sure where we will be at for the next year with everything we have. Now, if this is going, it sounds as if that there is some benefit to switching the vehicle over to what we have, um, and to, from what we have to what they're proposing. So, if this were to just kind of be an earlier purchase for next year's vehicle purchase, then I could, I, I financially, that would make sense, and I, that would make sense, cause it would be getting us into the truck, and we would be making the decision a little bit earlier so that we would have that ability. But I don't want to, I don't know, I, I'm hesitant financially to kind of jump that gun um, and just add a second vehicle in, um, into the same year when we're kind of, you know, at this point, if that makes sense.
And, and also, I understand totally where you're coming from, but we have to remember also that we did give the Borough one of our police trucks that you're using now for code.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point as well. Um, that was, I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely think the point's taken there, um.
I also know that I'm hesitant on it as well, number one, the mileage is low. And I kind of agree with Kyle. If we're gonna have all these extra expenses with this new building, I think we, in case we have to move anything, we wanna make sure the police have the technology that they need and stuff like that. If we go right now to do a truck for them, it could leave them with not everything that they need for that new building when they move over. So, I'm, I'm hesitant to say yes on that as well. I think that, um, we need to push that to at least next year.
Um, I respect the objections, uh, but I don't even think we have a motion yet. But Donna, it's in your expert opinion, it does not present a budgetary crunch. I can't hear you, Donna, I'm sorry.
No.
No, okay. Because, I mean, to be fair, the, the expenses that Kyle is alluding to really don't come into play until next year. If we continue on the schedule that we're on right now, I mean, it could be a decade from now. So, please, get me the contract we need. Um, that said, I'd like to solicit a motion from the body of counsel for the sale of a, a used police vehicle and the purchase of a new police vehicle under the terms that we've discussed, the ten thousand dollars from the rental of the one vehicle, and the nine thousand dollars having been applied to the purchase of the new with, uh, the, the disparity being somewhere in the two hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Is that correct, Donna?
Yeah, so if it's thirty-three and nineteen, it's gonna be about fourteen, and then whatever it costs to put the lighting and things on the truck.
Alright, so that's the motion I'm asking for from counsel.
Hey, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just a quick statement before, uh, the motion. In reference to a lot of, there's been a lot of questions about the, um, mileage on the vehicle. You have to remember that this was a K nine vehicle. It wasn't even a normal police vehicle. Uh, one of the main reasons the mileage was low, cause there was one person driving, the K nine officer. So, having that donated in full from the dealership and used since two thousand thirteen, I believe the year of it is, it's actually got a lot of wear and tear on it. The fact that it has forty thousand miles doesn't take into consideration that that vehicle had to run constantly to keep the dog heated and to keep the dog cool. So, the fact that we're getting nine thousand dollars for a two thousand thirteen car surprises me. We used to get two thousand, twenty-five hundred, maybe even not that. So, nine thousand is a, is a nice piece of change to get for a car that, yeah, has forty thousand miles, but has seven and a half years of idling time. Cause once that car gets put in the service, it doesn't get shut off for the sake of the dog, whether it be heat or air. So, I mean, it's a, it's a tough situation, and I understand all viewpoints, especially with what's coming up. But to be able to get a first-hand truck for fourteen or fifteen isn't bad either. I mean, it's definitely putting us ahead of the ballgame. I was glad to make that motion.
Does that decision have to be made today?
Nick, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question. Could you repeat that? Forgive me.
Does that decision have to be made today? Can we, uh, ask to make a look at some of the figures? Like, how was talking down, or like, do we have to make a motion today? Cause they're really feeling?
I mean, I don't, is, is the offer time contingent on the nine K? Chief?
I would, uh, yes, I would think so, because they, their council approved to buy, uh, a vehicle, but not like our vehicle, but they approved the nine thousand dollars, uh, in their budget plan uh, to purchase that vehicle, um, so, and to buy this other vehicle. Um, also, it, I guess, is defining them, I guess, is, is the big thing, is that they have them, obviously.
Alright, um, so, so the, the nine thousand dollars might be a time contingent. We could lose that deal.
Yeah, I guess we could. I mean, it's, it's up to the, the other person, um, the other council in Landville, whether, whether they want to, uh, move forward, that they approved it. But I don't know if they're gonna say, well, we want it now, or whatever else. If we just say, no, we, we're not selling it now, that's fine too, I guess. I just don't know if they're gonna come back and say, well, then the deal's off, then we're not gonna give you nine thousand dollars. We're gonna give you whatever, or, I, I don't know. I couldn't tell you that.
Nick, what, what is the, what is, so that, that, I think you ask a fair point, why the haste? I mean, I mean, now, I mean, the, the, the deal may be time contingent. Why the, what, what, what more information are you waiting for?
Like, a couple of weeks or something like that to sit back and, uh, figure out, uh, well, actually, we know pretty much everything, but, uh, as you were saying, we have money, extra money to do it. Is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, I, I, anytime I, you know, anytime the council's gonna make an expenditure that's over, you know, a couple hundred bucks, I mean, I'm always inclined to wanna ask that the, the budget director, the finance director, Ms. Stillwell. So, her, her expert feedback on the matter is that the money's there, um, and it's not gonna blow a hole in this year's budget. Am I right, Donna, to, to reiterate that again? Yep, she's nodding. She's muted, but I can see her nodding. So, I mean, I don't know what other information there is to wait for, other than, you know?
I mean, the only other thing that would be of use would be to have some sort of mechanical checkup to know whether or not the vehicle is in good shape or not. Like, I mean, I, and that's just one of those, like, what, the, as to Rose's point, forty thousand miles doesn't necessarily tell you the whole story, but obviously, somebody thinks it's worth nine thousand dollars, which means it's, you know, mechanically, normally you pay less for a used vehicle than it's actually worth, just cause it's a used vehicle, no matter what it is. I, I just, I would be, like I, like I had said before, I'd be more inclined if this would be contingent upon this being the vehicle for next year. I understand that may not be what we're asking for, but I would be more comfortable with this idea, because I do think that the point of the use case of the vehicle not necessarily matching the vehicle is a good point. I just, then this would just slot ahead of the other vehicles. If we think that it's, it's need for replacement is greater than the need of replacement for the other vehicles that may be older than it, and the, you know, the lifespan order that we replace them, and we feel as if this deal is good, then we just do this next year's purchase now, and then just don't purchase another vehicle next year. I understand that may not be what we're looking for, but that would at least make me feel more comfortable with it, I, I guess.
The other issue is that we tend to buy a car a year, which would put us at two cars this year, and then in the future, we would end up with two cars needing to be replaced the same year in probability.
Well, we wouldn't, and it, the, the car that they're, and that's a good, that's a great point that you make, but the, the, so the, the pattern is that the, the K nine vehicle is sort of a ruse in it, that it, it, it'll show a low mileage, but it's been idling for eleven years. I mean, so there, it, it, I, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, I don't know that it, it necessarily means that, that they'll have to, have to both go the same year, like, we're actually trading this ahead of cars that are older for a number of reasons. One being that the, the, the trade-up is, is more functional. You know, and its capacity to withhold the?
But it's with us in the future, okay. Got it, Chief, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's not, not a problem. Joe, the, the, the reason for it is like the perfect storm. We have a department that wants to purchase a K nine vehicle that is better than the K nine vehicle that they have, uh, right now. Um, their mechanic looked at it, um, approved it, uh, said, yeah, that would be a good deal for you guys. It's a good deal for Landville for nine thousand dollars for a police vehicle that's already done, cage, lights. Alls they gotta do is take off Falkroft and put Landville on it. As well as for us, it, it make an upgrade as far as with our, our K nine vehicle, um, being that it's, we got nine thousand dollars for Um, being that it's, we got $9,000 for it. It's $10,000, um, from the merch stuff. Um, I, I.
We didn't pay a dime for the vehicle at all.
I didn't pay a dime for the vehicle and we're replacing it this with a brand new vehicle that is. Like, uh, like, uh, Councilmember Skowski said, basically it sits and idles a lot and, um, you know. The wear and tear of idle time is more than anything else. Um. I guess I can't get into all the factualities of all the things, um, but, um. You know, that, that's what we're looking at and, and hopefully we can do that. Um, I understand the whole thing about the vehicle for next year, but I don't know what next week brings as far as with vehicles and accidents and this and that. Um, I may have misspoke with the 2009. The 2009 is, uh. Corporal Ackerroll is the, uh, tag reader machine. Uh, I'm in the process now of a text message to find out exactly what year. Um, Corporal White is, and, and now that I'm thinking about, I don't know if, uh, if Councilmember Skowski remembers, but I think it may be a 2005 or seven. I'm not sure. Do you remember that, chief?
I think the first, uh, Tahoe we had was a nine, then we had an 11 after that. I don't think we had anything younger than nine.
That may be, so, um, the tag reader one is an O9 then, and then maybe, uh, White is a 2011. So that, that may be, that, that, that's the way that goes or whatever else with that one.
So obviously, I, I'm not suggesting that if there's some sort of catastrophic reason to have to purchase a new vehicle that we wouldn't do that next year. I'm just suggesting that the budgeted expense is just being shifted forward. Obviously, if in a year or two vehicles get completely totaled and we need the two vehicles, we buy the, we, we figure out how to get the two vehicles or we figure out what to do. Um, but when we go for the budgeting, we sit down and we say, for this year, we're planning on replacing. The oldest, most worn down vehicle for that year. That's the, that's the pur- purpose of this budget item, that's the plan. And if we're saying, and that's what it sounds like, we're saying that this is hiding its age and its wear, and you guys believe that it. This is the next most needy vehicle. And also, it just so happens to be in a perfect storm of making it affordable, then this is the next. One and we're just getting it to you seven months early, is what I'm suggesting.
So then, how do they get reimbursed for the? So we, we budget $35,000 for a new police vehicle every year. So this is gonna be about $14,000. How are they reimbursed for the additional $20,000 that they'll miss for the next year vehicle if we're only paying $14,000 for this one?
Not, not to be dismissive, but I just think, I don't know if that's necessarily. I don't, that's not the way that I think of the budgeting. The budgeting isn't the, you know. The budgeting isn't this person's pot of money. This person's, the budget is our budget that we. Put out there and then the departments use. It's not like, you know, we're not dealing with. Birthday presents and we're re, we're, we're reimbursing. This is, you know, this is a budget. You give money for what you need and if they need more money in different places and we have more money, then we can move that money around, but. 20,000 isn't enough to get a car. And if they need more money in other places and we have the money, then we move it there. But that's a budgeting discussion for a budget, not necessarily for, you know. This specific moment. We're not trading cards. We're just like saying, I'm just saying, I think that if the idea is, is that. We're replacing the car because it's worn and torn. That's what we normally do every year anyway. If we think we're gonna get a better deal, we're just moving the time scale up. And then for next year, we just, whatever we would normally have left over, we're just moving it around maybe to other things that they need. Or buying. You know, um, the cameras that we've discussed in the past. There are other things that we wanted to purchase for the police department. That we've tabled recently that, that money can go towards that. There are lots of other things that we wanted to get for the police department that that $20,000 can go to. Like, there's, there's plenty of things that they're, that I'm sure that they could need or want that we can find 20, for $20,000.
Alright, so. How do I handle this, Alex? So if one councilperson wants to make a contingent and the other one, isn't that concerned with the contingency? What do we do here?
Well, you haven't even, uh, it's been a while here, um.
I know, it's been a long night.
Was there, was there even a motion officially made?
Yeah, well, no, I think there was, there was a motion made. I think there was a second and then the Lee Daly asked for, for discussion.
Correct.
Yes.
Uh, I, I didn't get a second on that motion. I believe Councilman Ruskowski made the motion.
Yeah, I don't think, uh, I, I think you just went into discussion before the, that motion that was on the table was seconded, so.
Did we not have a second? Alright, so then.
If that's the case, then, right, I mean, you can propose two different motions or we can propose one combined motion with a condition on it. I mean, it just depends on how you guys want to do it. Where somebody make the motion and, you know, you vote on.
If you want to make one motion, if that doesn't pass, we could make a, can, we can make a second motion.
Yeah.
So let's, let's go for the original motion. If, if it doesn't have the votes to carry. And then we'll, we'll. That's, that will be the beginning of the negotiation for the second motion, right?
Right.
That, does that work? Rogue?
Yeah, I make the motion.
Alright, do we have a second? Am I allowed to second a motion as the president? I don't think I am.
No.
Alright, so that motion does not have a second. Alright, so I guess we'll make the. I guess the motion contingent upon. Well, let me ask you this. I don't think it's fair that if $35,000 is budgeted for a vehi- police vehicle every year. That we should just say, oh, you used $14,000 this year, so you're gonna lose the whole rest of that $35,000 next year. I do look at budgeting that way. So, I mean, if we're negotiating. I don't know. I mean, what, what, you know. Chief, it doesn't look like it's gonna pass without the contingent. Do you want to proceed and risk losing the, the, the? You know what I mean?
I was just bringing it up to council. That's up to them. You guys are, uh, the ones that run the show. I was just asking for it, that's all.
Alright. Rogo, you're the, you're the, this is your committee. What are you thinking?
Well, I've seen it before, you know, over the years. Um, one opportunity has arose, you know, arose to get something beforehand. Um, it's a similar situation. It was a situation where unbeknownst to me. Uh, there was an opportunity for a special purchase under a grant. Uh, for a vehicle and I got a phone call about it and the deadline was only a couple of days away. To order the vehicle and I had called the president council at that time and said, look, I'm not trying to rush you. This is just. Something almost sounds like it's too good to be true. So if you were interested, you know, and, and they, you know, they went for it, but I don't, you know. This financial situation may have been totally different than ours, you know, currently. What, you know, it's building and whatnot. Um. It's just a shame not to be able to take advantage of a situation like this. To pay for more than half of a vehicle that was donated to it, you know, to begin with.
Can I, can I let you know, Rogo, if somebody makes a motion for it to be contingent that we are buying. Ahead of time for next year, I would vote yes on that. So I don't know if anybody wants to make that motion, but I would definitely vote yes on that.
So, Alex, how, what would be, because I guess the, the. The, the pro, the thought I'm having is, is that it's just that we would not be, we would not be. Planning a regular purchase of a new, of a new vehicle in the next year. I like, that is the thought. I, it's not necessarily a budgetary restriction in what. The, you know, that money just disappears. It's just that in the next budget, there just wouldn't be. A line for a regular purchase of a new police vehicle.
Right, right. So, I mean, I mean, you wouldn't necessarily tie that sentiment to this motion then. I mean, it would just be something that you as the council would basically put a little footnote in your brain. And then when you go to do your budget for next year, you would exclude whatever dollar amount you felt was. The cost of this vehicle from next year's pool of money allotted to the police department for vehicle purchases. So that's the way you would do it. Um, there's nothing wrong in doing that whatsoever, but yeah, that would be the mechanism that you would operate under here.
I, I would. Sure, or Joe?
Yes, sir.
Um. Would it make any financial sense? To take advantage of this situation now?
And then assess where we're at later.
Well, assess where we're at later, say the following year and to- don't totally dismiss. The ordering of a new vehicle, but maybe perhaps doing it later in the year instead of January.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess what it, I mean, and Alex, you can correct me if I'm wrong, what it kind of sounds like is effectively. You know, we can, those of us who, those who may be resistant to purchasing it under the condition that we wouldn't be buying one next year can either. Voice that concern at a bud, if a budget comes up with that item in there anyway, or vote no the next year anyway. With that same concern and that is just shifting it off that, that, in that way.
Right, that's exactly how you do it.
Can I say something? Uh, I like Rogo's idea. Uh, of purchasing a new vehicle in the latter part of next year.
Say, say it again. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
In the latter part of next year, where we had to purchase a new vehicle for the police officers and, uh, take advantage of. This offer that we can get now. To worry about, it's all done. And we're good.
Yeah, guys, we've been on, we've, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I am more than trusting of my fellow, uh. Council members that we can have this discussion again the next time round with those of us who feel the way that we do about. Not purchasing the vehicle, have, voicing those concerns again later and being able to have this discussion at budgeting time. Um, that is kind of just so that I am clear, that is where my head is at. That this is, for me, this is just moving next year's purchase ahead. Right?
That's pretty much what I was, I was trying to say earlier, could we do it later?
Yeah.
You know?
Mm-hmm, no, I get it. Alright, so I'm, I'm cool with that. So is, is, is the motion still on the table?
Um, no, it was defeated, so you're gonna have to raise it again.
It was, it wasn't defeated, it was not seconded.
Yeah, well.
So I guess, does that technically still, okay, so Rogue, or Councilmember Skowski? Jesus, what a night this has been. If you can make that motion again.
Yeah, I'm gonna try this. You're on, you know, well, I think we're a little sleepy. Why don't we go ahead with the purchase of the new vehicle as previously stated with the money situation of the trade? And discussing it at a later date, when, and if to purchase next year's vehicle, perhaps at a later date.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Andrew, just make sure that goes into the, to the meeting minutes, because that's your, that's your body of proof that, uh, you guys agreed to that. Quote unquote stipulation.
Yeah, I, I'm putting that in here. I, I just, for wording purposes, I'm putting this down, if this makes sense, this made a, Councilmember Skowski made a motion to purchase a new vehicle. Contingent upon the used police vehicle, uh, being sold to Lansdowne Borough with, uh, the excess funds. Used to cover the difference in the cost, uh, with, uh. With, and I, I haven't finished it yet, but with the intent, uh, with the plan to rediscover the purchase of a new vehicle, another new vehicle at a later date. Does that make sense? Or how would you work this?
Yes, for next year.
Okay.
You know, instead of later date used, you know, in the calendar year 2022.
Yes, that's what I was gonna say, Alex.
I will, I will second that motion.
Thank you.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? See the value in negotiation?
Hey Joe?
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank you guys on council. I totally understand where you're coming from financially, but I think. In the long run financially with the vehicle of, of getting the, um, trade in value for it now. Um, I think works in our favor of the borough and the police department at, at some point, but more on the, on the borough, but I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, sir. Alright, um, what day is it?
It's Public Health and Literacy Day.
Yeah. Alright, Councilwoman Isaac, it's Public Health and Literacy time.
No, um, new business.
Thank God. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, let's get this done.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Waters, municipal planning and zoning.
Yeah, a little bit. Uh, we had a planning. We had a planning commission, uh, meeting Thursday at 7 o'clock in which three applicants were heard and approved. Bureau of the Folk House, I mean Bureau of Folk House, LOC, the 711 project. Division Charter Academy and a subdivision by DB Enterprises at 540 and 542 Folk Cross Avenue. Members also reorganized at this meeting. For the 711 project, members asked for sound barriers to be installed behind the property. To protect the neighbors nearby. Also for another sidewalk off of Hook Road. For the traffic to be deterred from redirected. Uh, to bring, you know, the cars going up, uh, Folk Cross Avenue. Because trucks will not be able to go up that way. They will be stuck. There's no turning that way whatsoever, so that's what we were discussing, uh, during that meeting. And, but so we came up with.
Alright, very good. Very good. Uh, is that all we got? Actually, that was, that was pretty good. That was. Pretty busy week. Is that all you got, Nick?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Waters, there is one more.
Yeah.
Is the municipal legislation, uh, consideration of the. 2221, I mean, 2021, the, oh, one?
Wait, um, you're jumping.
No, under the, he's talking about under this line item for municipal planning and zoning. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Alex.
That's fine, that's fine. Um, so yeah, that will come up in a couple of minutes, um, but. Uh, under this particular item, one of those applications that was heard by the PC, we've got a land development approval resolution. Before the Borough Council, um, this evening, and that is for the 54542 Folk Cross Avenue, um, subdivision. Uh, this came together at the last minute. Uh, I apologize. Usually I like to have these things out, um, at least a week in advance for you guys. DC met on Thursday and we got the review letter from, um, Lisa's office. On late Friday and we got the, um, Delaware County Planning Commission. Review back, um, on Monday. We've been asking for that, even though it was looked at in December of last year, we'd been asking for quite some time. Uh, but we finally got it. So, long story short, the resolution, um, is before you to approve. This is a subdivision of two lots, 54542 Folk Cross Avenue. About 30,000, uh, 37,537 square feet total. Um, the plan here is that the two lots will be divided into, uh, four. Um, and then there will be two single family, uh, twin homes constructed upon, um, the now four lots. Um, notably, this is in the R1 zoning district. This is a use that is absolutely permitted by right, um, for this type of home. So, um, you know, obviously, we're just here to, uh, to debate the development of the properties themselves. And is actually only requesting two simple waivers for this project. Uh, did not need zoning relief, did not need variances, um, pretty straightforward project. Two waivers, um, are, I mean, basically mechanical at this point. One, uh, there's a waiver from 200, uh, point two. Of the county Sado, which actually just requests preliminary final approval. Instead of doing this in two stages, this would just be their final land development approval tonight. And the second waiver that they'd asked for is from 205.3 subsection six. Of the Sado and that is to forego showing all the significant features within 200 feet on the plan itself. Uh, this is a waiver that Lisa's office has, um, recommended. She's actually, they've recommended both. Um, this particular waiver just means that simply instead of putting all of those features that are within 200 feet of the property on the plan itself. That they'll provide an aerial photograph in the plan set when it's recorded. Um, so we had asked for two conditions. Uh, those are also pretty straightforward, which are included as part of this approval. If you guys approve it tonight. Um, well, there's more, uh, but there are standard conditions that, uh, you know, the division and the development will have to apply with all of the. Bur- borough ordinances, county, Commonwealth, federal statutes. All Americans with Disability Act requirements for accessible features on the property, including handicap parking spaces. And then notably, or more specifically with this, um, we're just requiring two kind of notes, uh, be added to the plan. One, that lot. One, that lot four have a note or a deed restriction essentially that says that it can no longer be subdivided. And developed any further, and that is just because of the relative small, small acreage size on that property, I mean, it's almost impossible to develop anything else. Once it's subdivided into that four lot structure. And the second also just simply has to do with um, an amendment to the plan, which would require. The applicants to expressly know that they're going stall sidewalk and curbing along the entire length of the property on Folkcroft Avenue. Um, so that being said. Uh, I will put it before the council for, um, if you guys have any questions, I know Lisa's not here, so I can answer any if you have any. Um, if not, then you would simply uh, a motion before you to approve this resolution uh, this evening.
I, I have a quick question. And it's only because of past experience. Is it my understanding, Alex, that the. Properties will only be built on some of the property, the land, and that the landowner will still own. That additional space that you're talking about cannot be developed?
So, basically what is essentially the deed restriction is saying is that. Those lots are all going to be, I mean, the total of the property doesn't even really amount to more than an acre and a half, so. When you subdivide it down into four lots, we're talking like a quarter of an acre, so.
So, my concern is, is that, and, and Andrew can back me up on this. Is that may have, this, something may have happened before like this in the borough, Andrew, correct me if I'm not. Correct, in the little strip of grass behind the Folkcroft Pool and behind. That doesn't belong to anybody now because the land developer is no longer existent. But it doesn't belong to the property owners and it doesn't belong to the swim club. Correct?
And nobody knows, that's a good point, Lee.
I just don't wanna end up with more property that is, nobody owns or has any idea what is happening with. And we're left cutting the grass.
Right, I understand your concern a hundred percent, but from my understanding of the plan review, that's not the case here, I mean. The person that ends up owning lot four, that will ultimately be sold that lot by the developer for that home. I mean, they'll own the entire acreage of it, the deed restriction is simply to say, um, that.
Where is this now, this is at the bottom of Folkcroft Avenue?
Yeah, five forty and five forty-two technically.
So they wanna build four houses there?
Two, they're, they're twins, so across there's four lots, it'll be two twins. Um, so, getting back to your point, Lee, just to kind of put a bow on it, so the deed restriction would essentially say. That once the land developer sold this to the owner of those homes, that, you know, person X can't come back. And try and build a single-family home on that property with that limited amount of acreage. Deed restriction can ultimately, at the end of the day, be waived by the Borough Council in the future, whether that's. Five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five, fifty years, but it's just a note on that plan that's recorded, that says to the outside world. You can't do this without coming back to the borough to get the express permission. So, in that scenario, based on the lot size with it being so small. It would have to be someone that would ultimately acquire all four of those lots again and would wanna consolidate it back into a large single lot.
Lot four would. Own that property, basically is what I'm asking.
Yes, yes, so you wouldn't have that attendant issue, yeah.
That was my concern, so if anybody came back and bought it. That would be the issue, again, in the future, okay.
Right, and you know, unlike, you know, this particular development where it's a use by right and they have the absolute right under the zoning ordinance to put these twins up right now. The deed restriction will prevent somebody from coming in and trying to do something on an acreage that small that you guys don't want.
Perfect, I just didn't wanna be left cutting the grass on a strip of land. In a random place, that was my concern.
And if that's the case in future land development, when we spot those kind of little dead areas. We will make sure that as part of the plan conditions that, you know, they actually end up with ownership of that piece, so that the borough doesn't have to maintain.
Right, that makes sense to me. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, no, I, I'd like to. Request a, a motion from the body of council. With the, the verbiage of the resolution presented by Alex, do I have to phrase this in a, in a different way, Alex?
No, just be a motion to approve the land development resolution for five forty-five, forty-two Folkcroft Avenue.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries, moving on to Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Daly.
Um, only new business is that June nineteenth is officially off the ground and running, uh, my committee came up with. Um, a screening of the WIZ, it'll be an interactive screening. And uh, we'll have a couple food trucks there that are uh. Black-owned businesses, we're really excited about that, the Fords have agreed to come and do an introduction. And we have a guest speaker from the Marion Anderson Museum, uh, who will be joining us. Uh, to give information on. What Juneteenth is and the history of it, um, I think we're getting a very positive feedback about it. It seems like uh, the community is very excited about this event, uh, in addition today. We have already gotten, we asked, sent out ask letters to help with funding the screening and the. Um, licensing fees and we've already gotten one donation back definitely from Raise Auto.
Who, actually?
So, did Mecca come through too?
No, not yet, another business donated another hundred dollars right at the end of the day by four thirty.
Perfect, so, um, very thankful that the businesses in Folkcroft support us and support uh, what we're doing for the community. So that's super exciting, um, the other thing is, is that our summer crafts will be getting up and running soon, there'll be a flyer out soon. Um, I'm excited to share that this year we will be doing in-person crafts, uh, it'll be one day a week, we haven't decided which day. Down at the park, you'll be able to sign up to come down, it'll be at Montgomery Park one week, at Lambwellum Park the following week. At Ashland Field the third week, and it will rotate that way for six weeks. Um, in addition, so whatever craft they're doing at the park, that same craft will be bagged and. Ready for pickup at Borough Hall, just like last year, if people can't make the craft hour or two. Or don't feel comfortable being around people yet, we'll have both options available, um, so I'm, I'm very excited, my committee is very excited about this. Instead of having it in one location, we're gonna try to move around the community, so all the children get an opportunity to get to do crafts with us. Um, that's all I have for right now, and we're working on Community Day at the same time, so, we've got a lot going on.
Good work, Councilwoman Daly. I did want to, if I may, I don't know if then now's the right time, just uh, definitely give a shout out to you for all the really great work that you're doing. You, you and your committee put Juneteenth together in very short order, Councilman Waters, you're, you're a big part of that too. Um, and I'm just, you know, I'm always perpetually in all of the. Stuff you're able to come up with and, and really short time and execute to success.
It's, it's a fantastic committee, we have some amazing residents who stepped up and really. Um, are pouring their hearts and souls into this stuff, and I really, I mean, I get the brunt of. The congratulations and the recognition, but man, I am so lucky to have such a good, strong committee, and I'm, I'm really, really thankful. For everybody who steps up and uh, gives their time and energy, it really, really, really. Makes a difference in the community, so, I'm excited for Juneteenth, I think it's gonna be fantastic. I have some new committee members who've stepped up and are taking the lead on it, so, it's um, a pretty exciting, exciting happening here. And at Parks and Recreation.
Awesome, uh, we're gonna have to uh. Be fixing to beef that budget up a lot next year, you've done amazing things with a very limited budget.
Yes, I will take all the dollars.
That will have to be, you know, might not be my decision to make, um, but uh, certainly will be my recommendation. To. To whoever else's decision it is to make, so, I just wanna put that out there. Um, moving on to the new construction committee, Councilman Willis, I know you're working hard on this. Um, you, turn it over to you, none of my frustration is your fault, you have been patient and deliberate and diligent and amazing at what you do. And uh.
While I, while I appreciate the, the thanks, uh, you did skip municipal legislation.
I'm sorry, yes, I did, that is one of the most important items for the night, I'm sorry, I've been doing this for three and a half hours, I'm punch drunk at this point. So, municipal legislation, Councilman Waters.
Yes, uh, just the consideration of the parking permit ordinance, twenty twenty-one, there's oh one.
So this is the, I mean, we've discussed this a number of times, um, I, I, you guys have seen it, hopefully, looked through it. I guess, uh, before the motion's made, if there's any other questions, feel free to ask.
Motion's on the table, do we have, uh, do we have a second?
Beckett.
Alright, any discussion before the vote? No, I'm excited for this one, this is also the fruit of some very hard labors put forth by a couple of our council members. Uh, namely Lee, Kyle and Rogo, um, this is stuff we've been talking about since the, since the campaign in twenty eighteen. So, um. Without further ado, the motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries, that is a really important measure. Um, that is the first phase. Of um, of how we will fund driveway restorations in the borough Folkcroft. That is a monumental step toward. Um, one of the biggest goals we had uh, on our way in, into office. Um, with this new council and. In the throes of a worldwide international pandemic where every curve ball that could be imagined was thrown at this council and every obstacle. Setting our path to trip us up, we tripped over and got up. Um, to have done this in such short time is remarkable, and I have uh, Councilman Waters. Uh, Councilwoman Daly and uh, and Councilmember Skowski to thank for the hard work that they put through on that committee to get this thing done. So I just wanna put that out there and just say thank you. That's all I got for that, I don't mean to get on a tangent, everybody's probably gotta go to the bathroom terribly and they're starving, and we've been in this meeting for three and a half hours. And uh, so I'm gonna shut my mouth and I move on to where I initially started to move on to was Councilman Willis with the new construction committee. And all those compliments for this also continue.
So, we have interspersedly discussed all of the things that actually need to be uh, stated um, with the delays in the paperwork and the things like that. And the various formal written notices being sent over that, which was the next step, we'll, we'll move from there, and then just adding in the fact that. Um, and I'll give you some more details about it now, um. Stevie G and I sat down and we met about, kind of thinking about what some of the more electronic and kind of networking. Aspects of what will be in the new building will be, um, there are some pretty interesting ideas that I'm going to wanna discuss as we get closer to that. Um, conference room with the television, so that if we end up in another worldwide pandemic or things like that, meetings need to be held, teleconferencing, things like that. Some, setting up a nice suite for that, uh, making sure that all of our runs and networking, which led me to, to discuss with our um, architect that. In the bid, the networking, wiring runs and all that are on the borough, not on the contractor, so at some point, we will be. The ones purchasing and making those, we'll have to either have somebody do that, we'll have to find somebody to do that, or Stevie G will do that, or however that will be done. Um, they're just putting in the conduit and the boxes where we need it. Um, and then also just, you know, the server rooms and discussed also. How we will set up for the possibility of live streaming meetings, once we may go back into person and in this new building. The different types of technology, which is I think something we've discussed in the past and we've seemed like we wanted to do. Um, if we end up back in person is to allow that live streaming access going forward for the community. Um, so those things are kind of in the works of discussion and trying to figure out kind of where we're gonna be at, and I will. Obviously come to you guys with more um, questions and discussions, so what you, where you guys want to go with that when we get there. Um, but that's the details for that. Portion. Would you like me to just move right into the next one? Um, so for parking permit and paving committee, as you said, the parking permit portion is now. Effectively legislated and done, we just, that needs to get set up and actual put into practice, so we'll kind of oversee and work on that as it goes through. The next big state step and what is going to probably take an infinitely longer period of time, unfortunately, because it is much more complicated, is the actual. Paving portion, um, so, Andrew, were you, were you able to get the appraisal uh, today, I know that that was uh, something that was supposed to. Possibly be available today.
Nope, it would is expected today, although I just got an email, so let me check and see if this is him.
So, there have been complications with getting the. Um, things like that, um, around uh, getting this appraisal done, it was a slightly more complicated. The day, the ranges of addresses need to be changed, as soon as that is in hand. We can start the process of planning that, so I will schedule a meeting with the committee and we will move forward with the planning of that portion. Um, so that is the next step, though, as soon as that's in hand, we will move, take our next steps towards planning the paving restoration portion.
Okay. Awesome.
That's all I have for that portion.
Thank God. Thank you, thank you, Councilman Willis, moving on to the Police Chief's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, just going over a couple things, we had a uh, a pretty big drug arrest, um, that Anti-Crime did. Um, got some drugs out of it and got around twelve thousand dollars. Um, on this last one, and that's not the one that I've been talking about the last couple council meetings, so we're still working on one that's bigger than that. Um, the paving is in, in effect, as you heard, um, Ms. Catania uh, talk about. Um, we are assisting with that and it's going rather well. Um, the only other thing that I have on the plate is uh, that um, you know, I wanna thank everyone for their help. Uh, residents, um, police departments, fire department, everybody um, with the help with uh, the missing juvenile over the weekend. Uh, it was a great group effort and I can't thank everybody enough for their help and assistance. And thank you again for uh, the consideration for the new truck.
Alright. Um, we did, we did pass that, by the way, Chief, so we didn't just consider it, we uh, it's passed tonight, the, the expense is approved.
I, 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 I understand it, but I, it was a very uh, long consideration, but I do appreciate everybody's effort, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, uh, the solicitor's report.
I have nothing independent, uh. Yeah, I have nothing independent.
Alright, Finance Director's report.
Um, just a couple things real quick, I, I emailed to um. Andrew and to you, uh, Council President, a list that we need for the audit, so I need to get that done, so we can get twenty twenty done, cuz I think there's a grant. That we need the twenty twenty audit done for, so we can get the grant money, so if we can work on that, if we can help you. Um, let me know, but I think a lot of that I need from the borough. Um. And then the only other thing is, the budget that we have is a summary budget, it would be helpful to know if anybody has the detail behind. The budget. So, so when um, Councilman Willis says that the debt service is included in the capital. Project line, I, I need to be certain of that, so I don't know how you came up with the numbers for the budget, so if we had any.
So we, we fit, we, we guesstimated that every million dollars that you borrow would probably cost seventy thousand dollars a year to maintenance. So in other words, a million dollar loan would probably amount to roughly seventy thousand dollars in monthly payments or annual or quarterly payments. To service that million dollar loan over the course of twenty years, so then basically what we did is we just, am I right? Kyle, with something like that?
Um, I believe we may have actually at that point had um, the debt. Uh, yeah, an amateurization schedule from them, there is no um, more detailed version of the budget, just. I, I mean, as you know, the, the details of the transitional periods, you know, this was, this was put together mostly through um. Council President Papaleo and I's effort, um, so it's not necessarily the most, um. You know, the, the thing that a professional would necessarily put together, um, if they were providing professional services, so. Um, it is in there, that was, um, that is the line item that includes that. Um, um, I. I don't have anything other than my, my saying that.
Donna, what's the total number on that?
So the total number under um, four oh nine, which is general government municipal building and garage, under capital expenditures is two thirty-four five.
Yeah, so, figure seventy thousand dollars times, uh, I don't know.
I think we were expecting a much bigger number than seventy thousand, uh, when we did the first schedule, the first one they gave us was much higher than the one we currently have. So I believe. All of that is the, what we were originally thinking we were going to spend in the year for.
And we expected we'd have that one point five paid down on the principal by then, right, from the, the archive?
The archive.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I would have to go back and look at what the original schedule, that was just the number, I just took the two.
Yeah, I I don't know. I I would have to go back and look at what the original schedule. That was just the number. Well, I just took the two payments for 2021, added them together and put it in that line. That that was how we did it. I believe the numbers, though, used to be much higher, which is why the. Why the number is higher than we would expect based on our current schedule.
That's good to know, though, because we it we added it in so. Into our projection. Okay, so really important to get the audits done for 18 and 19 so we can get 20 done and. I think that's all I really.
Andrew, where are we on that list and what do we need still? And who do I have to chase down and harass and?
I I've spoken to Kathy about it. Right now we're waiting on a bunch of different documents and she just sent out an email today, but. From, you know, that trash all from tax collection, basically. It's the plurality of most of everything that we have from our office. The only thing I'm not really clear on and Donna, feel free to advise here. Is where I would get proof of the Pima, the 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 payoff for the truck at 2018.
I know I. You can call somebody or the fire department would have proof of payoff or something.
Yeah.
They would have the title of the truck.
Yeah, it's not. It's not something I have in the office, the the payoff that is. I do believe I have the title on our safe.
Yeah, so that's the only thing. If we could give them the title, they would know it was paid off.
Yeah.
A copy of it.
The the stuff for tax collection had been prepared previously without going into detail in the previous year when this was done before. It has had to be recreated. I know that took some time. And there was.
What do you need the title? What do you need the title for?
Just to prove that the truck is paid off. They want some type of proof from Pima that the check, the truck is paid in full in 2018. So I don't know.
Which truck, the street sweep or a fire truck?
Fire truck.
Okay.
So.
And that's 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 part of our audit?
Yeah, they want proof of payoff.
Who who did we finance it through?
It looks like it was financed through the government, through the state, if I'm looking at this correctly.
Because they should be able to provide a payoff letter.
Right.
Andrew, contact whoever the lender was, tell them you need a payoff letter for that, that that loan. If if that that's the second best thing, the very best thing would be the title, right?
Well, something that just shows that it was paid.
Yes, you you so I mean that Andrew, I would contact the lender, tell him you need a payoff, a payoff letter. Like faxed yesterday. Needs to get. Is that all right? Have you has anybody thought to do that yet?
No.
Okay. All right, that settles.
That's why I gave you the name of the leases too. So you can contact them and get the lease information. Okay, that's all I have and my battery might die. So if I.
You you've hung in there like a trooper. God bless you, Donna, and God thank you. So this is a long one. So if you want to, if you want to just quit out of here, like, I'm cool with that. Going on to the borough managers' report.
Look, I think we've addressed enough of this. I don't want to. I don't want to bother you about it too much. Code enforcement during the month of April, we issued combined total of 196 code enforcement violation fines for things like. Primarily for grass and weeds, but for trash and a few other matters. So far in the month of May, we we have 123 23 fines on record, but we've had a significant number this week. We may already have issued 60, I believe. Just just the past two days for tall grass and weeds. As always, I encourage anybody that has any questions or concerns about code enforcement fines to contact me at the Borough. The couple of updates on projects we're working on on Monday, 5:24. So yesterday at about 5:00 AM, the grass around the playground at Montgomery Park was sprayed with chemicals to kill it. It's going to take 10 days from yesterday for the for the grass to fully die. At that point, the vapor barrier is going to be installed and all of the other stuff with the mulch will come in. So hopefully. In about two weeks, that that playground should have new mulch and everything set up and ready to go. Jake's tree service came in a few weeks ago to clear the entrance way to Montgomery Park of vines and overgrowth. It looks great. If you haven't been down, please take a look. Sean was able to source some decorative slate for the borough and is retaining it. I think to use Sean, if you're still on here, feel free to talk about this. For for a garden, I believe at the Falls property, I think it's a fantastic idea. So kudos to Sean for coming up with it. As as we discussed, but some council members may be aware, but so it's in public. We intended to begin street sweeping at the end of April with fines to be issued the first weeks of May, but due to the repaving program. And the highly irregular schedule that this would cause, we decided to delay. Street sweeping at least until the end of the the paving. So right now we're talking about sometime probably mid to late June with fines to be issued in July. And I lastly, I'd like us to start discussing. Once we deal with some of the matters that we discussed in the executive session.
I had a question. I I apologize, forgive me. I'm glad you said that about street sweeping. It jogged my memory. I had a complaint from a neighbor in Old Falkroft who wants to know why their street sweeping has ceased. Despite the fact that none of their roads have been worked on.
So Sean, again, I don't know if he's if he's on, he can. He can comment a little bit about that, too. I think. That, you know, that the schedule for the way these areas get swept would change too much that we would have a hard time keeping up with the. With the schedule that's posted currently, we would be able to guarantee that residents needed to move their vehicle between certain hours definitively. I I I do also believe that there were some concerns manpower wise that were a bit short. And that it would be considering the grass being cut, that it would be hard to guarantee when the streets would be swept. Because of that. So rather than to confuse residents, forcing people to move their cars or then not move.
Only in one part of the borough and then not in the other. Yeah.
It would just be that that it would be easier to just hold off entirely until, you know, sometime hopefully July at the latest.
That is, that's late.
Yeah, it's it's late. But. To full staffing, if we are able, and this is just a target, I'd like us to consider returning to bringing in both trash, hopefully sometime before the end of the fall. If that's feasible. Events, want to let you guys know that the food giveaways. Through Rep. Losas Office for now have concluded. They will, I believe, this is the last week, they'll they'll pick up again if and when more food is sourced. We hold a vaccine clinic at Borough Hall. Dozens of residents were vaccinated for COVID-19. And including at least one member of council, I won't name any names, but. He he might hear he or this person may be on. The second doses are scheduled tomorrow night. Also, children ages 12 plus can now receive the COVID vaccine fine vaccine and not fine. And the cold patch giveaway went very smoothly. As many as 50 borough residents were able to get cold patch. I think that after the holiday weekend, we should hold another event, maybe do this monthly until it's gone. It was pretty pretty positive. A lot of a lot of people liked it. Last, but not least, according to the Chester County Health Department's website, a total of 9.45% of borough residents have tested positive for COVID-19. Since March of 2020, this is a total of 627 positive cases. It's an increase of 54 cases since my last manager's report to council in April. Of these six borough residents have passed away, which represents well, which while awful represents no increase from the previous month.
Wait, six represent six six residents have passed away this month from COVID?
Residents in total since the since the beginning of the of the back of the pandemic in March of.
All right. Are we seeing? Cases plummet?
That's not entirely clear to me. I don't monitor the site every single day, but from what I'm seeing, the amount of time that's passed. From between council meetings, there's a slight decrease, but but again. You know, that we're still slightly behind the state average, which I think is around 10 and.
I mean, I think we also have to adjust our expectations now. Like, I think everybody should expect that at some point in their life, like chickenpox, you're going to get COVID. You're just not going to die from it if you have a vaccine in your arm. Like, I don't think this thing is is going to just disappear. I mean, I think like we have to adjust our expectations to understand that vaccinated people aren't going to die. You're just not going to feel good for a couple of days. So I mean, I I don't know what the variants are 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 giving us. But I just want to kind of put that out there that like, you know, this isn't, you know, the the. Tenth plague of Egypt that's going to take everybody out and and destroy the human race. I mean, like, I think this is a disease that is probably here to stay for quite some time. And it's like the flu now and, you know, but once your body has some sort of introductory to, you know, to the to the virus, I think that that is the first step to it not being something that's just going to kill you.
These these monthly reports are are just a snapshot of what happened since the previous report was compiled. So roughly about a month. From voting meeting to voting meeting, and it's hard to say exactly whether they're representative what's going on because we had a spike. After the winter spike concluded, we had a small spike. As things started to open up and I think as people got more relaxed and I think we've captured probably the end of that spike with this last month. And I think the, I mean, and you look at the county rates of the daily transmissions. I mean, I think we had 30 positive. Or 30 something positive tests yesterday, which is, I think, the lowest we've had. Basically, since the beginning of the pandemic. I mean, we're just coming on the lowest points ever. So. You know, if 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 that's to be believed, we could expect something as little as a dozen, you know, two dozen residents for the next report. And, you know, again, hopefully, at this point, many of those people will have received the vaccine and it will be a mild case if even asymptomatic, but I'm not a medical professional. As you may be aware, so I don't want.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not either. So don't. That's just my take on what I'm what I'm saying here. All right. So is that all you got, Andrew?
It is.
Old business going once, twice, sold. Anything under new business?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to hire Hunter Frank according to the terms in the collective bargaining agreement. For the highways department.
Second.
All those in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Hunter Frank, congratulations and welcome to the Borough Falkroft Borough Family of employees and council members and. Volunteers and the likes. We look forward to having you. I'd like to solicit from the body of council a motion to ratify the contract for employment. Through January of 2022 for our borough manager, Andrew Heyman. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Congratulations and condolences, Andrew. You're here for. January of 2022.
Late and we've been doing this now for almost four hours, but thank you. It means a lot to me. And it's just reiterating what was going to happen anyway, so hopefully.
Congratulations. Any of any further new business once?
Yes, yes, I I do not mean to drag this out, but Andrew and the rest of the council. I know we discussed earlier this afternoon, but do we want to discuss the mechanics and when we're going to go back to in-person meetings?
What does the council think?
I say July because that way we could start our workshop meetings and our thing in person since we will have all of us, I believe. On council that have been vaccinated.
So I would, I would actually would like to second that for a completely different reason, which is that, and this is a question for the council to this to think about and maybe approve for in June. I would think we've kind of set the expectation that there are videos of our council meetings and that people can attend them virtually. We should think about if we can make it livestreamable and recordable, even when we're in person, when we're not on Zoom. And that would take some time to get the equipment and purchase it and put it in place to be able to use. To me, that I think that's an important thing that we do. I think this is. The one of the few positives that come from the pandemic is the additional transparency we've been able to provide. Based on the way that we're performing council meetings, and I think we should attempt to continue that. So I think if we give ourselves July, then that gives us enough time to for me to sit with Steve to figure out what we can purchase now and in place to move forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't mean to rush you guys. You know, your decision is your decision. I just wanted to let you know that on this past Friday, the governor did extend the emergency declaration for another 90 days. Which is what gives you as a borough, the ability to continue to do virtual meetings. You know, when that when that declaration expires, so does your authority to do that. So. You have plenty of time to work it out and figure it out, but I just wanted to make you aware. And I know myself and Andrew discussed earlier today that if we're going to do this for the June 15th meeting, that. We probably want to make that decision tonight and then, of course, announce it on Zoom here so that the members of the public could be informed. Because as wonderful as this format has been. Like Kyle said, you know, you're going to lose some kind of connectivity or interactivity, you know, in that I imagine that first switch. But if you guys want to kick the can down the road to July, that might give you enough time to figure out how to do the live stream.
I actually, I think I think Mindy Isaac's. I think Mindy Isaac's reason was fantastic that does July give us the opportunity that every single member of our panel is vaccinated adequately? Right?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, how does everybody feel about that? The first meeting in July being our first public meeting again?
I have a quick question. Assuming that we are all vaccinated, would we, are we still going to mandate mask wearing? To encourage those who are not vaccinated that want to attend the meeting to still wear masks? That would be a question that I think we should think about. And I don't know what the legality of that is.
Actually. I mean, I'll give you the legal. So. Technically, unless something radically changes on Memorial Day. The governor is going to lift all of his other restrictions aside from the mask mandate. So, you know, your social distancing requiring your capacity limits, all that stuff goes away. The only thing that stays in place is the mask mandate. So with the CDC guidance, it is murky, but the end result is that. Technically, if you're unvacc or if you're unvaccinated, you're going to have to continue by law as long as that mask mandate is in order to wear a mask. If you're fully vaccinated, under the CDC guidelines, you do not have to wear a mask. But that being said, because the mask mandate is still in effect in Pennsylvania, you as a municipal body would still have the option to require all persons. Vaccinated or not to wear masks as long as that order is in effect. There's more of a policy choice at your point, you know, but again, you know, that would be the way you would approach it. You really can't. You know, if you don't put that mandate in place, you can't force someone to wear a mask. You know what I mean?
Right, and that's what I want to make sure.
Yeah.
Because people can just say I'm I'm vaccinated and not they, and I don't want to put anybody at risk. So, I mean, I would be fine with going back in person in July. But I would also be more comfortable if we all wore masks, no matter what. I have a child at home who is still not able to get vaccinated. And after having had COVID, I don't want to go through that again, even with a nine year old. It was not fun and I don't want to do it again. So I would be most comfortable if we still masked up and I know they're a pain in the butt. But we set the example for everybody in the room and that would be most important to me.
All right, so I'd like to entertain a motion from the body of council to return to live in-person meetings. For the first official meeting of July with a mask mandate in place.
Second.
All those in favor? Actually, I forgive me, forgive me, I withdraw that. I need the motion to be made before the it's seconded. You'll most you'll make the motion. Do we have a second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so Nick Waters has made the emotion for for for. Minutes sake, Andrew. Waters made the motion. Isaac seconded it. All those in favor?
I.
I. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will resume in-person meetings. The first meeting in July. Any any further? Thank you for bringing that up, Alex. Any further new business? Once going twice. Three times sold. Go ahead. Does somebody trying to speak up? What do you have?
One thing I wanted to discuss, just to make sure we we brought up the meeting is you and I discussed earlier the June 1st meeting. Alex wanted to discuss it as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, wow.
Well, we don't necessarily might want not want to do that because didn't Lisa Catania say that something might come up that we have to cover in June 1st? Or in the June 1st meeting, I think it might be the change order for the Delmar Drive paving. Right? Because we didn't approve that tonight. And it might fall in such a time that by June 15th, it will have been too late.
In which case. I I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just saying, you know, my opinion was that a meeting in five business days is probably redundant based on what you accomplished tonight. But if you want to keep it, it's fine, you know, and play it by ear.
I keep forgetting that June is almost here.
Yeah, that's the only reason I brought it up was that you literally have five business days between this moment and your next meeting. And just remember too, that if something like that, a change order comes up, you guys can always, Andrew can pull you individually and then you can ratify it at your next public meeting.
That's true. All right, so I'll make a motion to enjoy a little bit of summer break and cancel our June 1st meeting. I would like to entertain a motion to cancel our June 1st meeting.
So moved.
All right, so we so who so who so moved?
Lee.
Lee. All right, so Lee has moved and we need a second after Lee has said so moved.
Second.
Okay. So we have, Lee has moved the motion. Nick, who has seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. And I'm telling you that there is no, no more, no, no, no more new business. I'm not asking you, I'm telling you, there is no more new business for this evening. Is there any more new business for this evening? Good.
No.
Good. Moving, moving on to the next thing. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Aye, so moved. Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amen.
Have a great night, everybody.
Go in peace.